Ready?
Tomorrow, can you read this?
No. Owen, are you ready? You ready? You ready? I call this meeting of the Williamsburg James City County School Board to order. May I please have a motion to certify closed session?
Madam Chair, I certify that to the best of each member's knowledge, the Williamsburg James City County School Board, while in closed session, discussed only public business matters, lawfully exempted from open meeting requirements as stated in Virginia law, and that only such matters as were identified in the motion convening the closed meeting were heard, discussed, or considered.
Thank you. Can I have a second, please?
Second.
Excellent. It's been moved in second. Is there any discussion? Hearing none. Ms. Thursday, will you call the roll, please?
Mrs. Taylor.
Aye.
Mrs. Young.
Aye.
Dr. Beers.
Here.
Ms. Hummel.
Aye.
Mr. Kelly.
Aye.
Ms. Onby.
Aye.
Ms. Cook.
Aye. Motion passes. It is not on the agenda, but since the agenda hasn't been approved yet, I hope you all will allow me to ask DJ Montague students Kennedy Rhett and Braden Thornton to come up and lead us in the pledge. You guys could please come up and lead us in the pledge here at the microphone. And Kennedy and Braden love to dance.
And the...
Huh?
This is our map.
Would you like to lead us in the pledge of allegiance? Can you start us, please?
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America, to the republic for its sense, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you, Kennedy. Thank you, Braden. If you all could, if you could just have a seat for just a second, we'll call you back up, okay? Thank you. Okay. Ms. Thursday, will you call the roll, please?
Dr. Beers.
Here.
Ms. Hummel.
Here.
Mr. Kelly.
Here.
Ms. Onby.
Here.
Mrs. Taylor.
Here.
Mrs. Young.
Here.
Ms. Cook.
Here. Can I have a motion to approve the agenda, please?
Madam Chair, I move that we accept the agenda as listed.
Second. It's been moved in second. Is there any discussion? Hearing none. Ms. Thursday, will you call the roll, please?
Dr. Beers.
Aye.
Ms. Hummel.
Aye.
Mr. Kelly.
Aye.
Ms. Onby.
Aye.
Mrs. Taylor.
Aye.
Mrs. Young.
Aye.
Ms. Cook.
Aye. Thank you. The agenda is approved. That brings us to item 4.01, announcements and superintendent's report. Dr. Heron, please.
Evening, Madam Chair. Hortsby Middle School student Emma Grace Stelges was recently named a Daily Point of Light by the Points of Light Organization for her service in the community. Emma Grace volunteers and advocates for Avalon and also volunteers weekly at a local assisted living center. The Daily Point of Light celebrates the power of the individual to spark change and improve the world. Congratulations, Emma Grace. Fifty students from three high schools had the opportunity to take part in our second annual Discover Law Program with the College of William and Mary Law School. WJCC receives a grant from the law school admission council to enable students to participate. Through this program, WJCC students had the opportunity to hear a keynote from Portsmouth's Commonwealth attorney, take part in constitutional conversations, sit on a fictional jury, and experience an actual court case presented by the William and Mary Law School trial team, take a tour of the law school, and hear from a diverse panel of current law school students about their background experiences and challenges. And finally, next week starts, marks the start of winter break. There's an early release day for K through 12 on December 20th, and schools are closed until January 2nd, 2018. Wanted to take this opportunity to wish everyone a festive and safe holiday, and we'll see you in 2018. Those are all of the announcements I have this evening, Madam Chair.
Thank you, Dr. Heron. Anything from anyone else? Okay. That brings us to the next item on the agenda, which is board recognitions. We do not have any tonight, so we're going to move on to 5.02, school spotlight, DJ Montague Elementary, where I suspect we will hear again from our charming students. Dr. Heron?
Thank you, Madam Chair. I wanted to introduce Ms. Vasquez, the proud principal of DJ Montague Elementary School, who is making her way to the podium to introduce the school's spotlight for this month. Ms. Vasquez.
Thank you. Good evening, Madam Chair, members of the board, and Dr. Heron. Thank you for the opportunity to showcase an exciting learning experience taking place at DJ Montague. When second grade students entered room 122 in the fall, this September, they were excited to see tents of caterpillars and butterfly eggs, and so began their study of the life cycle of the butterfly, an interdisciplinary unit that has spanned months. I'm not sure who was more fascinated by the metamorphosis, the students or the adults. Here to tell you about the project is second grade teacher Catherine Ty and two students, Kennedy Rhett and Braden Thornton. This year, our second grade students raised monarch butterflies. Students were able to see the entire life cycle... Okay, it's not clicking.
At least I was validated.
A redo. Students were able to see the entire life cycle of the butterfly. We found eggs on milkweed and watched caterpillars grow from tiny spots on a leaf to fat caterpillars. Students learned new vocabulary words during our time with the butterflies, too. Their favorite was frass, which is caterpillar poop. They never failed to share that one with visitors who came to the room. This is a video of a caterpillar shedding its skin to form a chrysalis. Students were able to witness this event several times. Students knew that when a caterpillar made a J, then it was close to forming a chrysalis. We made lots of observations during these events and learned new things as we went along. Everything in the room stopped when we had a caterpillar forming a chrysalis. The chrysalis of the monarch butterfly is a beautiful bright green with gold dots. The caterpillar stays in this phase for about 10 days. My students would tell you that inside is butterfly soup. Students watch the chrysalids daily for changes. When the butterfly is close to emerging, you can start to see the wings, which you can see in the one that's forming. And here is a video of a butterfly emerging from a chrysalis. Butterflies tend to come out in the morning, so students were only able to catch one butterfly emerging. Once it emerges, it pumps the fluid from its abdomen into its wings until they are fully formed, and then it hangs out until its wings are fully dry. Once the butterfly emerged, we fed them with sugar water until we were ready to release them. We released about 15 butterflies in all. A butterfly was put on a student's hand to release it in the courtyard. This is one of our students telling what he's learned.
We learned that when they're ready to turn into a chrysalis, they get into a J form, and then they start doing a dance to wiggle up their skin and form a chrysalis. And when they drink sugar water, when they turn into a butterfly, and they don't eat any more milkweed.
Monarch butterflies are very unique creatures. Most of them only survive for about two weeks. However, every fourth generation lives much longer. This generation migrates to the Oyemal trees in the mountains near Michoacan, Mexico. They spend the winter there and then begin their journey north in the spring. Second grade students really enjoyed cheering the butterflies on as they were released to start their journey to Mexico. Some flew away quickly, and others hung out for a while. My students and I read several books about the monarch migration and mapped how far the monarchs would have to travel if they left from Williamsburg. We discovered that it was approximately 2,332 miles by car to Michoacan. Using the information that we gathered, our class set out to beat the monarchs to Mexico.
What is a pedometer?
It's something that we use to count the steps that we take.
What do you do with those steps?
We count them all up and see if we can beat the monarchs to Mexico.
Pedometers have been a great tool to track the migration, but also to learn about numbers. In order to record the number of steps taken, students had to learn how to read numbers. Second grade students are just learning to read three-digit numbers. After lots of practice, my students are reading four- and five-digit numbers. Here are two of my students to share more information about the migration.
This is our map that we made to show our ways to Mexico. Our class has walked 2,110 miles. Most of the monarchs are already in Michoacan. We would love to have your help to get the last 200 miles. If you decide to walk, please email Ms. Ty your steps or miles.
My students are passing out buttons. If you choose to race, you can wear your buttons to show that you are racing the monarchs to Mexico. Does anyone have any questions for us?
So, we should track our steps and send them to you?
Yes.
Okay.
So if you could track your steps or your miles using a Fitbit or a pedometer, you can send them to me, and we'll add that to our count as we finish our race.
Excellent.
5,862 today.
I'll write that down.
Well, thank you very much.
Thank you.
For coming. We appreciate it. Every time I saw the... Every time I saw the orange construction cone, I thought of Bob the Builder. I must admit that, but anyway. Does anyone have any questions for anyone, for Ms. Vasquez or the students? No, no one wants... Okay, great. Well, thank you very much for being here. All right. That brings us to...
That was fun.
That was fun. Yeah, I hit my button. I'm going to email my steps. That brings us to citizens' comments, and because of the volume of, number of cards we have today, we're going to give everybody two minutes. Ms. Hummel, if you would keep that time and provide instructions to us, please.
All right. Okay. This is the time when citizens who have submitted speaker cards are invited to address the board. Speakers are asked to come to the podium when their names are called, state their name for the record, and direct their comments to the chair of the board. Each speaker tonight is allocated two minutes, and time cannot be yielded to another speaker. Personnel matters are not discussed in open school board meetings, and we ask that you refrain from making reference to specific individuals. The board is interested in hearing all comments fully and requests that citizens refrain from any verbal outbursts, applause, or any other type of demonstration. Although the board does not respond to comments at this time, please know that we are listening, and we appreciate your time. Thank you for adhering to these guidelines. Madam Chair, my directions are concluded.
Thank you, Ms. Hummel. Mrs. Taylor.
James Hubbard.
James Hubbard, hi. I live at 4196 Haymarket Lane, Greensprings West. Thanks for your opportunity to speak tonight and for the service of those folks here towards your schools and community. In my view, the James City County School redistributing effort is very disjointed. I ask, was local business and the real estate community involved in the process? I ask rhetorically, who funds James City County schools? The county, the state, federal government, or is it philanthropic? No. They distribute funds. The taxpayers fund it. Real estate taxes and sales underpin salaries and school funding. I had the opportunity in the past few weeks to engage business leaders and experienced realtors, and their no more concern towards this proposal is stability for sales and locations of property. They are very concerned with the current proposal. It offers no stability. This effort, this redistributing effort, has also posed neighborhood against neighborhood within our community. The deliverable of the consultants was abysmal, in my view. I'm a consultant myself, and I feel qualified to state this. In the process of survey, option four of the survey was eliminated. Option six wasn't added until after the survey was in process. These issues totally invalidate the results and the numbers. I also understand that there were some erroneous student data also. There also appears to be no application of strategic long-term planning or master plan guiding the effort here. The outcomes should have a goal of equal opportunity for outcomes of all students. The impacts and implications, especially for students of a redistributive effort, dictate a much more thorough study and engagement of long-range planning towards a strategic effort to address the issues at large. Long-term strategic planning guides and advises towards planning, processes, activities, infrastructure needs, funding, decision-making, both long-term and short, training documents, publication, operations, goals, metrics, and measures, and a host of other dimensions and elements of an organization and its activities. I would hope a new effort would engage this strategic framework towards a better result. I thank you for your time.
Thank you, Mr. Hubbard.
Andrew Langer.
Thank you, Madam Chair, members of the school board. My name is Andrew Langer. I'm a parent. Here in the district, I'm also one of the founders of Williamsburg James City County Parents for Educational Progress, an organization dedicated to working to solve the problems that many of our students are facing, but also working to have us look before we leave in terms of this redistributing effort. And I want to speak tonight about, I have more extensive remarks that I've handed in, but I want to talk tonight about a basic axiom of public policy. I'm a public policy professional with about two decades of experience, and one of the basic axioms is you should always do more good than harm. And the proposal to redistribute high schools at the present time does more harm than good. And by that, I mean, we have no plan right now, either under redistributing or not redistributing, to help the students who are most at need. But redistributing at the present time harms a great many students, pulling, unless we wind up redistributing rising juniors and rising seniors, something that a lot of parents have raised concerns with, we rip students out of their high schools at the most vulnerable points in their academic career. At the same time, ripping other students out of their high schools harms those students who have forged and fostered relationships with both their faculty members, administrators, and other students in those schools as well. What we should be doing at the present time, and I know a number of board members have understood this, which is why several weeks ago, they raised their concerns, asked that we delay this redistributing for some time, and certainly have asked to redistribute, to delay putting high school expansion plans into any program, in the capital improvement program, until we gauge what the public wants. We can take those resources, and we can use the resources that we would be spending on redistributing, to instead focus on working with those students who are most at need and most at risk in our districts right now, and help those at the present time. Let's not harm those students who are at risk by pulling them out of their high schools. Thank you very much.
Thank you, Mr. Langer. And you've given your remarks to the clerk?
I have.
Thank you.
Mike Endy.
Good evening, and I want to thank the board for the opportunity to speak tonight. My name is Mike Endy, and I'm a very proud resident of Powhatan Secondary. My son Tyler is a sophomore at Jamestown High School. I am also the associate dean for career services at William and Mary Law School, and I appreciate the mention of the law school tonight in terms of the programs that will be running for our students. As a director, as the head of the Office of Career Services, I work with students every day. I literally, it is my job to help them get jobs. So I am aware of the challenges that they face in terms of opportunity and access, and we do everything we can to support them. I am also the co-chair of the law school's diversity and inclusion committee, so I am very aware of the need to establish programs that create equal opportunity for all students, for all students to feel that they're working in an inclusive and learning in an inclusive environment. My comments this evening are directed in opposition to any proposed redistributing of the high schools at this time, and I ask the board to respectfully decline redistributing until there is an opportunity to develop a strategic plan that addresses long-term issues that impact our community and the ability to educate our children. None of the options provided, options one, two, three, and five, provide any truly viable resolution to any of the primary redistributing criteria established by the board, that being longevity, proximity, and utilization. All of them will create disruption within the community. As mentioned earlier, it is already pitting neighborhood against neighborhood, community against community, and that is not something we should be striving for. Redistricting in this time is nothing more than a Band-Aid, and I'm sure also everyone here has heard about the phrase "shuffling deck chairs." If you take a look at the redistributing proposals, that is all that we are looking to do here. We're trying to just shuffle deck chairs, and all we're going to end up doing is trying to reshuffle those deck chairs again in just a few years. All of our children have a right to quality education and long-term equal access to that quality education. The focus should be on hiring...
Mr. Endy.
Okay.
Thank you. Can you please give your remarks to the clerk so we can get all of them?
Sure.
Thank you.
Eldri Pierce?
That's Deidre.
Deidre.
Deidre. Good old Deidre.
Thank you.
Hi. My name is Deidre Pierce. I'm a bus driver with WJC Schools. I am a substitute driver, and I choose to be a substitute driver because I have other things in my life, and I am retired, and I do not need the benefits that WJC Schools offer. Therefore, my point is about the fact that as a substitute driver, we make considerably less than a brand-new driver coming in who has no experience. Many others, no other school system in this area makes such a drastic difference between our raise, our rate, and their rate. I know for a fact that York County transportation is less than 6% of the total budget. I could not find that on WJC Schools' budget, how much of the total budget we encompass. The reason why we are so out there in the public is because our jobs do, the rates are, overtime is a problem. But we are also about the only part in this entire division that has a chance to make so much overtime because of our schedules. We start anywhere between 5:00 a.m. and end at 6:00 p.m. We go from Richmond to Hampton. As a substitute bus driver, I'm expected to drive anything and everything. I can be on a regular bus, and then be put on a special education bus, and I can change buses two or three times just in a morning shift. I cost you nothing in benefits, no health care, no retirement, no paid time off, no sick time off. If I do not show up, the office has to go out and do their job. I have been called at home to plead, and pleaded to please come in. We are 40 drivers short. I've been where I've been, the only driver, sub-driver that comes in, and the other drivers are noticeably upset by their picking up so many extra runs. Without the substitute drivers, this system will not and cannot carry out the driving routes that are every day. Thank you so much.
Thank you, Ms. Pierce.
Jennifer Morton.
Good evening. My name's Jennifer Morton. I'm the parent of a Jamestown junior and resident of Powhatan Secondary. Most likely, my daughter won't be affected. She'll be grandfathered to Jamestown as a rising senior, I would hope, or I will be a squeaky wheel. But many friends and other families do stand to be affected. The first thing I'd like to say is that we should acknowledge that there are inequities between the schools. This is a separate issue from redistributing. In no way should Lafayette be experiencing shortcomings because the board requires a higher head count or whatever other reasons are given. In no way should those demands require the uprooting of other students. The school board is here to support all students in the district, and every student deserves the opportunity for an equal and exceptional education. The primary point of contention for me in the redistributing discussion is the obvious lack of a long-term plan. Poor planning is not conducive to a sense of community. I think we would all agree that the more invested students are in the schools, the more positive the school experience. Middle schoolers become invested in their high schools before they get there, especially the ones that are athletes and the ones that have older siblings. Reportedly, this redistributing proposal didn't count rising ninth graders as effective, and that was a very poor assumption. Without a plan for expansion, none of the redistributing options solved the problem of overcrowding. If anything, they overcrowd the only school that is at capacity but has the lowest level of resources. We should take this opportunity to plan and foster a sense of community rather than disrupting families for a solution that doesn't actually solve anything. Have we explored schedule changes, alternative course offerings particularly for seniors, trailers as temporary space? I know families who have left our school system or who chose not to move here because our small schools don't offer.
Thank you, Ms. Morton. Could you leave your remarks with the clerk so we get them all, please?
Jennifer Vicamendez.
Hello. I'm Jennifer Vicamendez. Thank you to the board for giving me the opportunity to speak. Thank you to the board for giving me the opportunity to speak. I'm a parent of a recent graduate from Lafayette High School and a junior at Lafayette High School. My family feels very tied to that school. It's a great school, but it's an under-resourced school, and this inequity is a problem because it means that not all kids in the division have the same, access to the same opportunities. There's an opportunity gap that exists between, among the high schools. The other thing I guess I want to say is that I think that, you know, in our discussion, the most important consideration should be the quality of education of all our students, not the local business climate, not property values, but the quality of education of all the students, regardless of what neighborhood they live in, regardless of whether or not their parents can come out to meetings like this, regardless of whether or not their parents speak English. I guess I would say, if school funding continues to be allocated primarily based on enrollment numbers, then the disparity amongst the high schools will continue unless more students are moved to Lafayette High School. Given the significantly higher number of students from lower-income families, as well as Lafayette High School acting as the hub for ESL instructions, we have a situation right now in which the students who need the most are concentrated at a school that receives the least. Jamestown High School students are offered far more opportunities to take AP classes, and Jamestown students take double to triple the number of advanced placement exams. Higher concentrations of students from wealthier families means that Jamestown High School benefits from parents with the resources to contribute, to booster clubs, to PTSAs to a greater extent. And as long as this trend continues, then Jamestown High School will continue to earn ratings, which will continue to attract more affluent parents and families, and the lack of diversity will continue. Thank you.
Thank you, Ms. Vicamendez.
Jackie Bridgeforth-Williams.
Good evening, everyone. Ms. Superintendent, Dr. Heron, Madam Chair, thank you once again for the opportunity to come before you all and speak this evening. So I am Jacqueline Bridgeforth-Williams, founder of The Village. We are an organization that was formed to promote unity and education while building a bridge between local schools and parents to help them get connected with the tools to aid each child in reaching their full potential. This evening, I wanted to talk about, a little bit about redistricting as it relates to our mission and our goals. In keeping with our mission, we are here to be a part of the process through continuing to advocate for equity, diversity, and lowering of the achievement gap in our schools as we embark on the process of redistricting. And our message remains clear that no matter how the lines are drawn, the children still are the main focus, and no matter how you draw the lines, if we don't have equity for all, we have not really accomplished anything. I'd like to say that The Village is an action organization, and I am happy and proud to report to you that our partners at William &amp; Mary, along with others in the community, have enabled us to send over 34 tutors a week to our local schools. We send 24 tutors once a week to James River Elementary School. We send tutors also to Berkeley Middle School. We are an action organization, and our concern is about all students. It's not really about where you live, or where you come from, or your socioeconomic status, but it's about that achievement gap that is a lingering problem and concern that has been around a long time, and it's time for us to do things. And I hear a lot of folks here tonight speaking about wanting to come together as a community and wanting to get the work done. I'm here to tell you that The Village is the place where you can definitely come and become a part of that process. Thank you all.
Thank you, Ms. Bridgeforth-Williams. Thank you.
Philip Kennedy.
Good evening, members of the board and Madam Chair. My name is Philip Kennedy. I am a lifelong resident of Williamsburg-Jamestown County. One of the issues I'd like to address is how the maps were presented to the community. I find it interesting that we ask for feedback from the community members, but you don't give the community enough information on where their kids are going to go. So if I have a rising senior, I have a rising junior, and a rising freshman, I have no idea how this redistricting is going to impact my rising freshman and my rising junior and senior, because the board has not put out the requirements or the grandfathering. We hear a lot of, "This could happen, this might happen," but yet you're asking for feedback, but you're asking for feedback based on half of the information presented to the community. I think it's very important that if this does move forward before that, give the parents who's going to be grandfathered in, and then ask for parents' feedback. Because as a parent, if I have a rising freshman and a rising senior, and I don't know that my kids may be split up going to two different high schools, but you're asking for my feedback, I can only give you feedback on my concerns that one of my children may be lacking something if they're at split schools. So that's the first thing. The fact that map number five is so drastic to let everyone in the community know, we have a larger problem. When you present a map that shows equity amongst all the schools, but it requires the largest disruption, that is a problem that was created before the maps. And this map just shows it glaringly to our community that we do have a problem if we have to move that many kids to get equity amongst the schools. So I do think it's important to recognize that we do need to move forward. I hear people often say, "We need more time to think, we need more time." This, children who come from underprivileged backgrounds, this has been an issue for years. It's when it comes to impact the more affluent areas, everyone wants to say, "We need more time."
Thank you, Mr. Kennedy.
Amy Quark.
Good evening. My name is Amy Quark, and I have three main points I want to make regarding redistricting. The first is a fiscal issue. Taxpayers have already paid for redistricting the high schools. If you redistrict now, you buy us time to make a long-term plan for expanding school capacity. This is the fiscally responsible choice. The alternative would be to spend more taxpayer money to purchase temporary trailers for Jamestown. That would be fiscally irresponsible. The second is an equity issue. We keep hearing about the group of students that will move from Jamestown to Lafayette as the group that are affected by redistricting. But what we don't hear are about all the students at Lafayette and War Hill who are being affected every single day by the inequitable distribution of resources across the schools. This group of students far outnumberes the small group of students that would be moved through redistricting, and they will continue to be affected unless we move forward with this spot redistricting. The third is a diversity issue. We live in a time when politics are highly divisive, and people increasingly only talk to those people who have the same viewpoints as they do. Research shows that exposure to diversity is what will reduce prejudice, will overcome divisiveness, will foster civic engagement. In our classrooms at William &amp; Mary, we have found time and time again that the most challenging and rewarding learning environments are those that bring together students with very different lived experiences in the classroom. The student that's lived in four different countries, the student who spent their entire life growing up in a poor neighborhood in Portsmouth, the Chinese exchange student, these are the kind of environments that push students to challenge their assumptions, that push them to come to common understandings. If we want our WJCC students to have these kinds of challenging and rewarding learning environments that will make them good citizens, we have to create diverse schools. Redistricting decides which students go to which schools. Redistricting is the only way to create diverse schools and have these benefits for our students, all of our students. This means choosing map two for the middle schools, map five for the high schools. Thank you.
Thank you, Ms. Quark.
Jennifer Tisdale.
Hi, my name is Jennifer Tisdale, and I'm a student at Jamestown High School. I live in Powhatan Secondary, and my neighborhood is about two miles away from Jamestown and seven miles away from Lafayette. So redistricting Powhatan Secondary wouldn't be very efficient. Capacity is another criteria, but Jamestown's academic performance doesn't seem to be affected by its student population. If we do go through with redistricting and all the schools were equal, they would be at 97% capacity, which would mean that we would have three overcrowded schools instead of one, especially with the growing community in Williamsburg. All the redistricting options presented were rated poor for longevity by the consultants, so picking any of them wouldn't really make sense. I think it's also good to consider how many kids this is going to affect, especially the ones that are already struggling in schools, and this is going to hit them the hardest. Moving schools cuts ties with teachers and especially friends, and also puts a lot of stress on the students that are being moved. All of this is unnecessary, and we should wait to redistrict until a new high school is built. Thank you.
Thank you, Ms. Tisdale.
Richard Tisdale.
Hi, my name is Richard Tisdale. I'm a native of Williamsburg and a resident of Powhatan Secondary and a parent of a high school sophomore who just spoke. I'm going to echo what a lot of other people have said, that basically, I don't believe now is the time to redistrict high schools. The school board has voted to hold off on capital improvement requests in order to gather more info, as I understand. The redistricting consultant cooperative strategies has deemed the longevity of all redistricting options as poor. Capacity is not urgent, as only Jamestown is full, yet performs well academically. Balancing population results in 97% capacity for all the schools and implements a solution with poor longevity for all the schools. Unnecessary redistricting would be forced relocation that solves no problems yet forces students to pay the price during the most important public school years. The number-one priority of the school board is to foster academic success, not achieve arbitrary numbers. All high schools share graduation rates of over 90%. College attendance ranges from 77% at Jamestown to 85% at Lafayette, according to WJCC's own numbers. Therefore, Lafayette has the highest college attendance rate of all the high schools, despite the differences. Manufacturing a perfect balance results in numbers that look good in a newspaper article but harms the very students the school board has promised to champion. Please don't do more harm than good. With unnecessary disruption in the critical high school years, wait until a new high school is built and focus on policy that results in success for all. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Tisdale.
Judy Nisich.
Good evening, Madam Chair and Board and Dr. Heron. Thank you for the opportunity to speak. I'm in school transportation. I find myself in somewhat of an unfamiliar territory tonight because I'm usually before you on behalf of all drivers and bus attendants. I'm here tonight on behalf of a specialized unit of eight regulars and four intermittent substitute drivers. And in the interest of full disclosure, I must tell you I'm one of these people in this unit. And we are not drivers who are waiting to settle into a comfortable run, or we're not waiting to jump to water, CW, or even private enterprise. We're here for WJCC, and this is what we've been doing for years at entry-level pay. Mr. Robinson is actually here in his 20th year as a sub-driver. I'm a 34-year contracted driver who nine years ago opted to sit out the obligatory 30 days, give up the top of the pay scale, new bus every year for 15 years, to become a substitute driver. And the others in this unit are from my nine years on down. We work in the trenches almost every day. We're given any route in this school division, from Rivermont to Richmond, and quite often, with a couple of exceptions, we do it with some of the oldest equipment in our backyard. And like regular drivers, we find addresses that don't exist, sometimes in the dark. We get students onboard the bus who don't want to go to school. We are often accosted by disgruntled parents, disrespected by students, and quite often, very little support from the schools we serve. Our service is so little valued that we were not entitled to remain at the entry-level salary that we've worked for for years. Everybody else got a raise? We did not. We cost you nothing but our salary. No benefits, as Deidre said earlier, just what you pay us to work. We deserve to be compensated and elevated to the current entry-level pay scale.
Thank you, Ms. Nisich. If you'd like to leave your comments with the clerk, we can get the rest of them. Thank you.
Kim Hunley.
I'm the president of the Education Association, and I just came to spread holiday cheer, and I missed all the excitement, the last board meeting. I had chronic hives, so I thought that might not be too good with all the redistricting to come, but I'm good now. I don't really have comments on behalf of the teachers on redistricting because we wanted the board to know that we have faith that you all will do what's best for all students, and that's what we're talking about, and your quest for equity, which is, the definition of that is being fair and impartial. And so that's what we are hoping for. And just to say, in my 34 years of experience, and just on behalf of students, I can say this, children are very resilient, regardless if they're the young ones, up to teens, and a lot of times, they handle change a lot better than we do. And so just in making your decision, do what is best for the children, all children. And if equity is your quest, then be fair and impartial. Have a happy holiday. This is as exciting a meeting, not as exciting as all the wonderful things going on at school with Diwali Day and Kwanzaa, Hanukkah, Christmas, you name it. It's very exciting, and this, last week, the kids are off the chain, so this was exciting for me. Just as exciting is what's going on in the classroom. We teach the children, and we will, regardless of where they come from, where they live, whatever. What's best for children is what we want. Thank you. Have a great holiday.
Thank you, Ms. Hunley. I'm glad you're feeling better.
Thanks.
All right, is that the last speaker card? Thank you. That brings us to item 7.01 Audit Report for Year Ended June 30, 2017. Dr. Heron.
Thank you, Madam Chair. Annually, we present the auditor's report for the fiscal year, and I'm going to ask Ms. Barnes to come and introduce our auditors this evening. Ms. Barnes is our chief financial officer. Thank you.
Thank you, Dr. Heron. Good evening, Madam Chair, other board members, and Dr. Heron. Each year, as you know, we're required to go through a financial statement audit conducted by an external accounting firm. This evening, we have a partner with Dixon Hughes Goodman, Ms. Leslie Roberts, who will walk you through the highlights of the audit and the report for the year ending June 30, 2017.
Thank you, and good evening. Very interesting listening to all the citizens' comments. Really enjoyed that part. Just want to give you guys some high notes. I'm not going to go through page by page. I know you've seen the financial statements, they're pretty lengthy. Just going to try to point out some things that I think are particularly important, and just give you some high-level feedback on the audit. The audit went well. We were able to finish it on time. We did have some challenges this year due to the new system implementation and Christina leaving during that period of time that required Renata wear kind of two hats throughout the audit process and use a system she was not familiar with. So we did have some inefficiencies built into that, and we're going to just get together with Monique and Renee and just kind of go through that and try to hash out another plan. A lot of it will be hashed out just because we figured out the right reports. It just took time and going back and forth. But we finished everything in time, and we rallied and worked together with your team, and were able to get it done on time. As we've done in the past, I'm just going to point out a few things that are in the financials and the required correspondence, and if I don't talk about something that you guys were interested in, then by all means, just stop me and/or, you know, at the end, ask me questions. We always like to point out the pages nine and 10 is the certificate of excellence in financial reporting. This is above and beyond what's required by accounting pronouncements. Basically, the GFOA comes in and looks at your report, the whole CAFER, and looks at it at a higher level. And y'all received this award, I think, for, I don't know, at least 30 years. I know the county's received it for 32, so I think y'all are right in line with the county. Basically, it's a higher level of achievement, and it's really creating a CAFER that's easier to read, and you know they're not easy to read, so being able to make them a little more accessible is good. Within the financial statement, I guess the bottom line is on pages 11 and 12, is the results of our audit. This is the independent auditor's report. And basically, this is the report that says, were we able to come in here, look at your records, and tell you they present fairly the operations of the school system and the balances at the end of the year? And once again, you have a clean, unmodified report, which is at the bottom of the first page, I believe. The other thing I always like to point out, I know that the financials are cumbersome and trying to figure out how this number ties to that number and how it all pulls together is kind of hard. I think the management's discussions and analysis section is probably the best place to go to get a high-level look at it. Basically, that's on pages 13 through 22, and this gives you some comparative information, some explanations for fluctuations. It talks about highlights, financial highlights, and some budgetary matters as well. And this- And this is something that's put together by your management, but we look at it from an audit perspective and make sure there's nothing inconsistent with the audited financials or with anything that we discovered in the audit. And so it's good, high-level information. So if you spend no time, hardly any time, reading the CAFER, do read that portion, because that'll kind of give it to you in a nutshell. We also issue one other report on our audit. Because your audit's done under governmental auditing standards, we're required to issue a report on compliance, on internal control over financial reporting, and that's found toward the back, on pages 129 and 130. And again, this is a clean report. We don't, did not see any indication of any significant deficiencies or material weaknesses in internal control over reporting. And then, that was all I was going to talk about, about the basic financial statements, and I was going to go on and talk about the required correspondence of smaller document. Does anybody have any questions on the basic financials?
Does anyone have any questions about the CAFER before we move to the smaller document? I will apologize, I have not had a chance to read this. I will, and I may have questions after that, but...
There is a page in here that gives you my contact information, so feel free to reach out to me, or the Audit Manager, or not Manager, Audit In-Charge, Brittany Gregerson, who's back here as well. So that gives you our phone numbers, emails, so if you do go through it and give it a good read, and you have some questions, by all means, contact me.
The superintendent's nodding, she's certain I will.
Hmm? What?
Yeah, I'll be in touch.
Throughout the year.
Yeah, absolutely.
Throughout the year, and that's kind of why we put this in the correspondence, so it's easy for you, for people to reach out to us and to find it later. But anyway, the other thing I was going to talk about is the one that's, the smaller document, I don't know if you guys have that with you. But this is basically required correspondence, that we are required to either do it verbally or in writing to those in charge of governance, which is you. And for the most part, yours is pretty boilerplate. Like I said, on page one is our contact information. The letter itself starts on page two. And if you had any new accounting policies that you implemented during the year, we would point that out in the second paragraph of page two. You didn't have any of that this year, but you can see later in the same letter, we talk about there is going to be a new pronouncement, that, a new GASB, that it will affect you quite significantly next year. And that's related to OPEB, the Other Post-Employment Benefits, that you have to, currently, you have to book to some extent, but the disclosures and the recording of those obligations are going to change pretty significantly next year. That's maybe, well, on page two, I kind of, I've kind of moved around, sorry about that. On page two, I talk about how you don't have any of those this year. And then on page four, kind of gives you some high-level information about this new GASB that we're going to need to implement next year.
Page four? Page four? Am I on the, is it this?
Y'all looking at the School Activity Fund Audit?
The report to the school board.
Right? Yeah.
There are two.
Are they looking at the one that went with the School Activities?
No. Uh-uh. Oh, this one here? This one. There's two. So it's report to the honorable members of the school board, as opposed to report to the school board.
I'm not sure what they're looking at. They looking at School Activity Funds one? Okay. Yeah.
Gasby number 45.
Okay, so basically, on page two, we're talking about how we didn't have any of those to implement this year, but next year, we are going to have a pretty significant GASB to implement, and of course, we're working with Monique and Renee to help that implementation. It's very similar to the implementation of the pension GASB that we suffered through a few years ago. Basically, you have to go through, and you, the reason it makes it kind of difficult or complex is you've got to go back and restate beginning balances, and do this year's implementation. So anytime you have a retroactive implementation, makes it a little bit more difficult. But we have practice, because it's very similar to the last one, you know, like our, that spreadsheet that we used to figure it out should be very similar. Then we go on in this letter on page, back to page two, and we talk about some of the sensitive estimates within your financial statements, and just point them out for you. Basically, your OPEB obligation, as it is right now, is an estimate, and it will still be an estimate when we book it in a different manner next year, and we disclose it in a different manner. Also, the depreciable lives of your property, that's an estimate. We look at, we look at how long things have lasted in the past, and kind of use historical data, but we really don't know how long a bus is going to last, how long any of these things are going to last. So those are estimates. Also, we talked about that GASB that we implemented a few years ago on the net pension liability. That's an estimate, too. We're estimating how long people are going to be with you, when they're going to retire, you know, how long is, you know, how, what the obligation's going to be, you know, at that point. And there's all kinds of factors that go into that, you know, what the earnings on investments will be, you know, oh, just the gobs of things that go into that, that factor into that. So we just point out that that is an estimate. So those are your three significant estimates that you have in your financials. If we had any difficulties during the audit, then we would point them out here, and I've already talked about, we did have some difficulties, mostly related to the system turn, the system change and the turnover that you experienced during the year. If we have corrected or uncorrected misstatements, we point them out here, and we didn't have any that were material as a whole. If we had any disagreements with management, we would point that out here. Again, if we had disagreements with management or significant difficulties in performing our audit, we would not be talking to you right now. We put it in writing at the end of the game, but we wouldn't, we would let you know that ahead of time. And then there's a copy of Management's Representations in Appendix A. This is the letter that they sign at the end of the audit, basically saying that they've given us all the information, that they've, that they've been forthcoming with everything, and disclosed everything. So it's kind of a hold harmless letter for us at the end of the audit that they signed. So just giving you an idea of what they represent to us. If we had any other significant matters or findings, they would be in this letter. We don't have any of those. We just wanted to point out that new GASB that's coming up. So any questions on this correspondence, or anything else?
Questions for Ms. Roberts?
No.
Well, thank you for the opportunity to serve, and we look forward to working with you in the future.
Appreciate all your work with us in the past and in the future. All right. That brings us to 7.02, which is really two items, Portrait of a Graduate Class of 2017, and Profile of a Virginia Graduate, which are two different things.
Thank you, Madam Chair. This evening, we're going to have two presentations for you. The first one, we'll talk about our Williamsburg James City County Schools Portrait of a Graduate and our results from the last year, and that, I think Mr. Thorpe is here to start the presentation, then he will be passing to Dr. Carroll for the second part of the presentation. Thank you, Mr. Thorpe.
Yes, ma'am. Good evening, Madam Chair, members of the board, and Dr. Herron. Dr. Carroll and I are pleased to present you information related to WJCC's Portrait of a Graduate for the Graduating Class of 2017, as well as Profile of a Virginia Graduate. This is a two-part presentation. As a part of this overview of the Class of 2017 Portrait of a Graduate, we will look at this graduating class's SAT and ACT results, along with graduation rates and advanced placement information. During the course of the next few slides, we will refer to information on the screen, as well as data on the infographic that's at your workstation. So you have a copy of the presentation, you also have an infographic as well. The Class of 2017 had an on-time graduation rate of 92.3%. The on-time graduation rate is the percentage of students graduating in four years. You can see that our cohort completion rate is 95.2%, and the cohort completion rate is the on-time graduation rate plus students who earned a GED. The dropout rate for this class was 3.1%. It's important to note that each of these figures that I just mentioned for the Class of 2017 reflects an improvement from the Class of 2016. On the Scholastic Aptitude Test, students can earn scale scores of between 200 and 800 on each of the two main sections, combined reading and writing, and also mathematics. WJCC students' average on, average score on the reading/writing portion of the SAT was 576. This outpaces the state and national averages. On the SAT math, WJCC students' average score was 560, also greater than the state and Students who take the ACT are scored in four areas: English, Math, Reading, and Science. The highest possible score in each of these subtests is 36. The graphic on the screen shows a comparison between the average scale scores for the graduating class of 2016 versus the class of 2017. As you can see on the infographic, WJCC students' average on each of these subtests was greater than both the Virginia State and National averages. Sticking with ACT, college readiness benchmarks are established to determine the minimum score needed on an ACT subject area test to indicate a 50% chance of obtaining a B or higher, or a 75% chance of obtaining a C or higher in corresponding credit-bearing college courses. The national benchmark ACT scores are as follows: For English, it's 18; for Math, 22; for Reading, also 22; and for Science, 23. The infographic shows the percentage of the graduating class that scored at or above these ACT subtest benchmarks. For instance, 72% of the Class of 2017's ACT test takers scored at or above the reading benchmark of 22 points. The displayed bar graph again shows a comparison between the cohort classes 2016 and 2017, with the Class of 2017 having greater percentages of its ACT test takers meet or, meeting or exceeding the content benchmarks for English and Reading. The College Board's Advanced Placement Program offers high school students opportunities to complete college-level courses and potentially earn college credit while still in high school. Colleges and universities will often consider students who score a 3, 4, or 5 on an AP exam for exemption from coursework, with college credit granted for these courses prior to entering college or university. Scores on AP exams may also be used by colleges and universities to consider student scholarship opportunities. This slide shows the percentage of AP test takers from each of our high schools who scored a 3, 4, or 5 on their AP exams. Approximately 74% of all WJCC AP exams earned a score of 3, 4, or 5. 74.
But we don't have the break.
Lastly, the WJCC Class of 2017 students were offered $25.9 million in scholarships. This concludes the presentation for Portrait of a Graduate for the Class of 2017. This time, I'm going to transition to Dr. Carroll for the Profile of a Virginia Graduate.
Before we transfer, can we ask questions of Mr. Thorpe?
Of course.
Does anyone have any questions for Mr. Thorpe? Okay, then, let's transition. Thank you, Mr. Thorpe.
Good evening, Madam Chair, school board members, Dr. Herron. On November 16, the Virginia Board of Education approved revisions to the standards schools must meet for state accreditation and the requirements students must meet to earn a high school diploma. The new diploma requirements take effect with the students entering the ninth grade this fall, the Class of 2022. The Profile of a Virginia Graduate describes the knowledge, skills, experiences, and attributes that students must attain to be successful in college and/or the workforce, and to be life-ready in an economy and a world characterized by rapid change. Tonight, I'll share with you the outline of a redesigned high school experience that the Virginia Board of Education has determined a Virginia graduate must experience to be
Our schools won't be held accountable only for SOL test results. Those are still important. There are other factors that are important, like dropout rates, graduation completion index, the notion of absenteeism, and perhaps most importantly, achievement gaps. So all of our schools now will be both held accountable, and information will be reported to all of our constituents on how schools are doing and what they're doing to improve those outcomes.
We really want to give a broader picture of what's occurring in school, and we really want to have every school look at continually improving, even our schools that are at the top of the scale. We want them to be looking at, what do I need to do to continue to improve for all my students?
For the high school experience, I think the board's action today better connects what goes on in high school to what comes next for our students, whether that's preparing them for the world of work, preparing them to join the military, or preparing them to go into higher ed. There'll be an emphasis on opportunities to be exposed to workplace skills, on career planning, on deeper civic engagement, and on looking at assessments that go beyond just a four-part multiple choice, to actually ask students to perform and show that they can communicate, collaborate, critically think. Those are the skills that folks need after they leave high school to take the step for
Virginia Board of Education undertook a three-year process, which included outreach and dialogue, to determine how the Commonwealth could better prepare young people for the expectations of higher education, military, and employers. The Commonwealth has decided that earning a diploma should be more than simply passing a prescribed series of courses and tests. In addition to academic achievement in English, Mathematics, Science, and History, the Profile of a Virginia Graduate includes a set of expectations that includes increased emphasis on developing the five Cs. They are Critical Thinking, Creative Thinking, Communication, Collaboration, and Citizenship Skills. We anticipate embedding the five Cs both within the academic program and across the high school experience. In addition to the five Cs, the Profile of a Virginia Graduate provides a framework of four areas that the Virginia Board has determined a life-ready Virginia graduate must possess. I will now individually present each of these four areas. Content Knowledge. A student must demonstrate the ability to learn both academic and technical content and apply it within the classroom. The achievement of this criteria is measured by earning high school credits. In WJCC, a student currently must earn 28 credits with nine verified credits for an Advanced Studies diploma, or 28 credits with six verified credits for a standard diploma. Under the Profile of a Virginia Graduate, a student is required to earn 26 credits with five verified credits for the Advanced Studies diploma. One verified credit would be required in each of the following areas: English reading, English writing, Mathematics, Science, and History and Social Science. Under the Profile of a Virginia Graduate, a student is required to earn 22 credits with five verified credits for the standard diploma. One verified credit would be required in the same five areas as required for the Advanced Studies diploma. All students also must complete the following additional requirements: Complete a virtual course, train in CPR, first aid, and the use of the AED, complete either an Advanced Placement course... placement course, or an honors course, or a CTE industry credential, and demonstrate the five Cs. The profile of Virginia graduate framework, however, will ask students to apply the content and technical knowledge they acquire beyond the high school classroom. As a result, schools will be required to provide opportunities for students to learn about career options aligned with their interests in their own communities and elsewhere through the following three areas. Career planning. A student must align their knowledge, skills, and personal interests with career opportunities. A student will successfully plan and prepare for post-secondary opportunities. We currently assess this goal through the annual review and revisions to a student's academic and career plans. We currently provide several opportunities for students to participate in career planning throughout the K-12 school experience. Some of these are listed here. Workplace skills. A student must demonstrate productive workplace skills, qualities, and behaviors. We currently assess this goal through student completion of industry certifications. We currently provide several opportunities for students to participate in workplace skills during high school. Some of these are listed here. Community and civic responsibility. A student must build connections and value interactions with others as a responsible and responsive citizen. We currently do not formally assess this area. And we currently provide a few opportunities for students to engage as a responsive, responsible and responsive citizen. Some of these are listed here. In conclusion, the Commonwealth believes balanced emphasis on these four areas will better prepare our students for success in the 21st century. We're excited about the opportunities to the profile of Virginia graduate presents. We look forward to implementing these changes, starting with the class of 2022.
Questions for Dr. Carroll?
Yes. Dr. Carroll, I read you on the page on the slide, it was about additional requirements, where it talked about virtual course training in CPR, advanced placement, demonstrate the five Cs. Do we have anything from the Virginia State Education Department about what the criteria will be for assessing these five Cs?
We've currently asked for feedback and further clarification on what the VDOE would like us to do, and so we're in the process of gathering that guidance.
I'm looking at the five Cs and, yeah, I hope they give you some guidance, because I think citizenship, I think, would be really difficult, collaboration. So unless they have a rubric or something that can help you. Anyway, thank you.
Anyone else? Mr. Kelly?
So is that basically, whoops, sorry, what they yell at me. Is that basically for all of these, that the state hasn't given you real criteria for, to meet these? Like, for instance, as Mrs. Young was talking about, citizenship and civic responsibility, future community service work, formal volunteer opportunities, service-based learning, does it tell you how much of that do you have, they have to do, or?
The Board, as I said, has just approved this a few weeks ago, and we're waiting for them to operationalize and provide guidance to all the school divisions.
You get the kids start school in a few months, the class of 22, right?
Correct.
Got it.
Starting with the freshmen in 2019, this has to be in place?
2018, the rising 9th graders.
Rising 9th graders.
So between the new profile of a Virginia graduate and then the new accreditation standards, it's going to be a little loosey-goosey, a little...
There's a lot of change in a short time, and I think old school systems are seeking more guidance on the expectations at the state level. We're obviously starting to have internal conversations about what it looks like and how we can deliver some of this as well. We're certainly excited about the fact that it's not just about a test score anymore, even though it will be very complex to monitor and adjust and try to figure out if our students are meeting expectations. I think the fact that we're wanting to take all of these in place and make our students' workforce ready, I think, is a move in the right direction with regard to the State Department.
And I think it helps that our expectations are already higher than the state's, so we're starting from a good place, because we already do better.
Madam Chair, did you use the term loosey-goosey?
I did, sorry. I apologize, I had too much. Yes, Dr. Beers, did you have?
Yeah, I, this looks, you know, really interesting and focusing on sort of long-range development of the student, but I'm curious, having been a late bloomer myself, will this accommodate students who aren't entirely sure what career path they want to take as they're going through high school?
My initial answer would be determining your career, but also is different than preparing workplace readiness. I think that's the idea of the five Cs, that, and just being aware of different careers and possible post-secondary opportunities, whether it's going directly into the workplace or a variety of educational opportunities, awareness and opportunity, I think, we would be as a focus for our students and the graduates of the class of 2022.
Well, then, I guess I can answer my question myself. I don't think it will accommodate late-blooming students, in the sense that this, you know, I don't want to call them marching orders, but it's pretty carefully laid out, and I'm thinking about the student who wants to dabble in, you know, is aware of what the graduation requirements are, but may not necessarily know in terms, or even have an interest in deciding what career they're going to choose or take. That's all, that was the only question I had, so that I would hope that there'd be some flexibility within this approach, that unless they are, unless you just, you must start focusing on what your career is going to be, or what you want to do when you go to college, or, so help me out with that. Because what it used to be, you, not so much used to be, it's what it is now. You take a set of courses, you do, you know, you get your Bs, or your Cs, or you get your As, or whatever, and that allows you to, you know, move in this direction, or go to this college, but in the process, you may not, you know, have really solidified in your own mind what it is you want to do. So I'm, I just think that's one of the cautions about, you know, there's so much of the focus on what you do after you get out of high school, because of that, because kids are different, and they, and I'm, I am a, you know, I'll be honest, I'm a perfect example. And it took three or four years after I got out of high school before I, you know, sort of finally straightened out and figured out what I was going to do, and those were tough times. That was 1966, so there was a lot going on then. So I'm just, I'm not messing with you, I just, I think...
I think the goal then would be to, for students who may have a similar experience as you or pathway, that they know, when they get that high school diploma, it won't take them three or four years to figure out what that next step is, and it doesn't necessarily mean that it's four years...
But is it such a long, taking four years to figure that out? What's the rush?
Evidently not.
Oh, hey, I guess, yeah, I really, I just think, you know, I'm just thinking of students that I've worked with when I was at William &amp; Mary, and one of the biggest things that came up with many of my students is shock, that they had gone, you know, and they knew what they wanted to do, and they, you know, almost to a fault, and they had difficulty with not hitting the mark, or being disappointed, and that had never happened to them in high school. And they have, they had a really difficult time adjusting to that. So I'm just, you know, some of the life lessons, you know, the other, I don't think that's, those are such terrible things to happen to students.
One of the strengths of what's been proposed is the key skills, the five Cs: critical thinking, creative thinking, communication, collaboration, citizenship, they're transferable to just about any career.
Yeah, I agree with the five Cs, absolutely.
Yeah, and so there's a basis of there, there's a basic academic knowledge, there's some very basic skills in any avenue that a student would go into, and hopefully the exploration piece will allow them to start to look at potential careers early than perhaps they would have.
And the other thing I'm also thinking about, highly gifted, very, very bright high school students, don't always know, and even if they go through something like this, they can change, and they can, you know, move in other kinds of directions, and I, I don't want to say they, you know, it's okay if you don't hit that mark all the time, every time, that you've got your whole life to deal with those kind of decisions. It just, I just don't want this to be so, and maybe, you know, I'm old-fashioned about that, I don't want that to be so rigid that it becomes like the old college curriculum that we've tried to get away from, is that, you know, you're in this track, or you're in that track, or that's it. So I guess the other part of that is, can you move about from track to track, or, you know, once you've...
There aren't any tracks.
Well, I know, I, okay, I'm using the wrong word. Whatever your plan is, whether it's, what were the categories there? Workplace skills, career planning, going to college, whatever it might be, is there flexibility within the curriculum?
I think the key in the approach, and obviously there's a lot to be thought through, both at the State Department and locally, is actually to increase the amount of flexibility for a student. I think that the intent, the intent behind all of it is to open doors rather than track and close doors, and allow students to find their niche, or niche, as we say here, sorry.
That's sort of what I...
Either way, it's fine.
And move forward from there. So I think the, I think is one of the...
And it continues on, it continues on, whether you're in a career track, or, you know, doing an apprenticeship, or going to college, it's, you know, and that's why the Cs are really, are obviously really critical, yeah.
Zombi.
And I was going to say, essentially what Dr. Heron just said, I think gives us more flexibility, and with our pathways pilots, I think we'll be able to expand those and tweak those, and with less focus on SOLs, we'll have an opportunity to be creative and prepare our students to meet the diverse needs. So I see it as exciting, and I do see it as flexibility, I don't see it as rigid. I think this is what we're looking for.
Mr. Kelly?
As has become customary, Mrs. Zombi has stolen my thunder. But of course, we also wait for, see what comes from the state, to see what, how, what the meat on those bones is really going to look like.
You'll keep us posted on that.
Certainly.
Excellent. Anything else? Any other questions for Dr. Harold? I mean, Dr. Carroll, why did I call you Harold? I'm sorry, that was a very weird, Heron, yeah, there we go.
No, I think, along with what Mrs. Zombi said, the five Cs and how it meshes now with all of the project-based learning that we have currently going on at all three high schools, is going to be a nice transition for us, maybe easier for WJCC than other high schools around the, or systems around the state, and I really am intrigued and encouraged by internships, and anything that we can do to offer people, our students, a chance to see what the real world is like, and maybe open their eyes to different industries or jobs that maybe they couldn't even imagine.
Anything else? Thank you very much.
Thank you.
All right, that brings us to 7.03, School Board Self-Evaluation. Thank you to Mrs. Taylor for leading that up, and to all of you for filling that out. So do you want to take that?
Okay, so of course, annually, the Board reflects on things that are going well for us and potential areas of growth, so I'm going to provide a quick snapshot of the information that we gathered, and thank you to all of you for participating, and to Ms. Serza for compiling the data for us. So in the rated portion of our survey, Board members identified data monitoring and leading as united team as potential areas for growth. And Board members identified collaborative relationships and a vision of high expectations as strength for our Board. In the narrative portion of the evaluation, the Board identified commitment to academic success of our students in our division as an area of strength. And the Board identified addressing the issues of equity and emphasis on shared leadership also as areas of growth. So is there anything that anyone would like to talk about in particular that was of interest to them?
Any comments? Okay, well, this is something that we do annually, and I think it just gives us some food for thought as we move forward, and it's part of our SOP, and so we'll come back and conduct this exercise again. Thank you very much, Ms. Serza, Mrs. Taylor, we appreciate it. So that brings us to item 7.04, Middle School Redistricting. Just as a check-in on the process, tonight, we will discuss the information that we have before us, which includes additions from the last meeting, feedback from the public, and actually the time to look at the maps themselves. We'll discuss that tonight, come to consensus on any direction for staff, if there is any, and then, at the first meeting in January, we will revisit the conversation, and then either take action on the second meeting in January, or take, you know, discuss further, and then with a final deadline of the first meeting in February to take action, if we haven't done so already. So with that, Dr. Heron, did you want to review the feedback from the public on the middle school maps?
Thank you, Madam Chair. We do have the data from Cooperative Strategies. Unfortunately, Mr. Leopold wasn't able to be with us tonight, but he has provided a very quick overview of all the data points that came out of the community survey, and of course, we're looking at middle schools first of all. As Mr. Leopold's not here tonight, if the Board has any questions about the survey, the process, the data, suggestions, Ms. Overkamp-Smith is making copious notes for us tonight so that we can relay those questions to Mr. Leopold, we can get the answers for the Board immediately after the meeting. So what we've got in front of us is just a very brief overview. This is the community dialogue meetings, and we had 751 responses to the middle school survey, as a strong community input, and I'll give the Board and the public just a moment or two to look at the data on the slide on each of the options. Move to the next slide, any questions or comments, first of all, Madam Chair, or?
I would just like the public to be able to see.
Okay.
The primary, we've all had an opportunity to review this, and so I just want the public to be able to digest it, those who can see it in the, in the audience. Does anyone have any questions about what's on the screen?
Much of an opportunity.
No, just not much. Last night?
Last night. Yeah, it was on the...
Yeah. So, okay, do we have the maps themselves, option 1, 2, and 3, that we can put up from the last PowerPoint? Do we, is that possible, just in case Board members want to reference them?
This is, these are the final results from question 8, was asked to rate the options.
Okay.
Along with this, we have some of the maps we can go to, to relook at those.
Okay.
There's the demographics of participants taking the survey. This information will of course be posted online immediately after the meeting this evening on the redistricting website, that we've tried to keep the community informed of the process.
We could start by talking about option one, two, and three, and what we each like about that, or we could just do round robin and talk about what, what we like about the maps and what, either specifically about each option, or if we have any questions for staff or any comments about any map or overall. So I'll defer to the wisdom of the board in terms of whether you'd like to go around the table or whether you'd like to discuss each map. Okay, well, and Zombie, do you wanna start?
I'm curious if the consultants tweaked the maps at all based on community feedback? Were the, were the middle school maps tweaked?
There's no tweaking down, this is all as is until all, the board had an opportunity to read all of the comments and look at the data. And that will go public as well. And then based on any direction you may give us tonight, we'll pass on to Cooperative Strategies as to any adjustments that you want us to hit them to make on your behalf based on your own perspectives and the community feedback you've had an opportunity to read.
Yeah, I think the operative point is that we wouldn't want to make any tweaks unless there was a consensus of the board to do that, so. Yeah, so why don't you, yeah, why don't you go over your two cents and then we can go around the table.
So for me, option three increases SES at Berkeley, so that's, that would be a no for me, even though that seems to be something that the community likes. Number two actually decreases it the most, but not as much as I'd like it to decrease. And I'm concerned about equity and parity and I think we, we have an opportunity to try to balance SES at the middle school levels. So for me, I like option two the best. In terms of tweaking, we did discuss neighborhood concept and that was included in the, in the criteria and there are four families who, and two, two maps, I think, four families in Forts Colony would go to a totally different middle school. And so that would be a tweak, I think that was just a little, that one section of Forts Colony was, was split when Powhatan Secondary was split years ago. And so that impacted one family years ago and so this time around it affects four families. So I would like to see that tweaked and not have four families go to a totally different middle school. Nottingham Share, it's, it's the low maintenance area which really is designed for retirees. It's a zero-lot, low-maintenance section.
Near Powhatan Secondary?
No, it's right across the street from Regency at Long Hill. That section, that entrance there, yeah, so.
So tweaking some of the, because I think the three maps are supposed to not divide neighborhoods.
Right.
But by accident, they maybe kinda did.
It's an accident. That's my understanding from the consultant, it's an accident.
Okay.
And it impacts four families, so, yeah. I would like to see that tweaked and I like option two, but I would like option two to look better if that could be tweaked with regard to SES.
Someone wanna go next? Okay.
I just have a question, can, can we see option, I don't have the maps in front of me, can we see the three maps before making any more comments because I just refresh my mind?
And if you go on Board Docs, there should be a link there, Ms. Serza loaded that, that might help too, because you can see them side by side on the website?
If I go to the survey results?
No.
I didn't, I don't see the link, okay, just a minute, I'll go back.
Dr. Beers, do you have any thoughts about the middle school maps as you pondered, you know, studied them over the last couple of weeks?
I'm sorry, for some of the same reasons that Mrs. Oenby mentioned, I'm leaning towards option two. Can we put that up?
Uh, yeah, you wanna put option two?
Oh, there it is, okay.
Can you put option, yeah, thank you. And if you want the clean, the next slide is the cleaner version, yeah. Ms. Hummel, you wanna?
I, I agree with both Ms. Oenby and Dr. Beers. Option number two is the best option for me of the, of the three. It just balances the schools the most. Option one, when I was looking, option one had, just of the survey, when you look at support and strongly support, there were 289 people that really liked option one. And then there's like 226 that really liked option two and 286 that really liked option three. So I think, you know, as far as the community is concerned, it's kind of a wash as far as the people who support and strongly support all three of those options. So, so when you look at the community's support among all three of the options, then for supporting, for me balancing the schools is most important, so that would be option two. Because option three is not at all appropriate in my mind because it takes Berkeley from 53 to 52. It's just, and there's a 29-point difference between the school with the lowest and the school with the highest socioeconomic difference in option three. So that's why that's not a viable option for me.
Thank you. Mr. Kelly?
I'm kinda leaning towards option two as well. And one of the reasons, in addition to what has been already stated, is that Towano is at 79%. And I think there's a real potential for a lot of growth in the upper end of the county and so that leaves a little more room in Towano than the other two options. So as Mrs. Hummel said, from a popularity standpoint, they're all kind of a push, but right now I think I'm leaning towards option two.
Mrs. Young, what do you think?
Well, I'm kind of leaning towards option one. The reason I am is because of the proximity of this little blue area that's next to the other large blue area and I think that, for me, that works better. I do understand about the socioeconomic for map two, but as far as proximity, I like map one better. My, my second would probably be three and then two is last, so.
I see Ms. Young's point about map one being more contiguous and maybe easier for, from a transportation standpoint, but I do understand the merits of option two as well because there is so much growth in the Stonehouse District. It may be prudent to begin shifting away.
So you're thinking two? You had to, okay. Mrs. Taylor brings up a good point, I'm not gonna, I presume that transportation looked at these.
Transportation, members from the Transportation Department were very involved in the development of the maps. They had an opportunity to talk about the impact of transportation on each one of them and all of the maps are viable for the Transportation Department.
Good to know. I, I too favor map three, but I, I mean, map two, sorry, sorry, sorry. Yeah, my three, gosh, woo, shouldn't have had that diet coke before I came here. I do have some questions just to add clarity to the conversation and maybe help people understand why these maps look the way that they do. And, and so I just, I'm assuming that the location of the four middle schools, when juxtaposed to where our built environment is and the location of our neighborhoods, that essentially contiguous zones were pretty difficult to come to that because we've got two middle schools so close together. So I thought, it sounded like Football Sunday right there.
I heard Peyton Manning.
It's not me, it's not me.
I heard Peyton Manning.
Oh man, that's gonna be in my head the rest of the meeting. And that if, if they were perfectly contiguous, then perhaps socioeconomic distribution would be even wider than we're, you know, there'd be more of a delta between some of the schools. Is that correct, Dr. Haron?
We would have to confirm that with the consultant, I don't think we got a response. We don't have that information, Ms. Overkamp Smith, no?
But it is fair to say that the location of the middle schools made these maps a little?
It's, it impacts where they, where they land because we have two schools so close together.
Okay. And following up on that, because we have two, two schools so close together, our idea, our desire to have everybody go to their first or second closest school was also a little bit harder to hit that mark because two schools are basically two miles from each other, is that, okay. So that, because those numbers don't look so great when you look at the charts, but, but there's a reason for that. And I, I like map number two, it's, it's my favorite, but I don't like it, I don't love it. And part of the reason is because there's a 15% spread between socioeconomic, the delta is 15%. And I wonder if there's a way, assuming that there are enough board members to ask staff to look at this, is there a way to get to 10%? Is there a map that can do that? If we keep this, if we keep two as it is, because people seem to like it, and keep that as an option with no tweaks, but then also maybe look at a 2A or, or, I don't know if it takes number one or number three to use as a baseline, to see if there's a way to get to a smaller spread between the schools in terms of free and reduced lunch numbers?
I'm, as we know, part of the process of board input and community input, once we develop maps, part of the process is to take that feedback and make tweaks to, to the map. If we were to do a brand-new map, we'd have to go right back out and ask for feedback all over again. If we were to just look at minor tweaks, I believe our direction from Cooperative Strategies is that they would work on that and then we would again ask for input. I'm gonna ask Ms. Overkamp Smith to how that would work perhaps, explain it to, because she's been our key liaison with Cooperative Strategies. So we, yes, I believe it can be done and I guess, I guess they can start to look to make minor tweaks to try to get to 10.
Right, just that six board members are sufficiently pleased with number two, I don't wanna-
Sure.
Yeah.
Good evening. If minor tweaks are made, the consultant recommends that we post those online and then we keep the feedback form open and ask for feedback on the tweaks. That would be, the Forts Colony tweak would be an example of that. If major changes are made, the consultant recommends that we reopen a survey. Once the map is created, we collect input over the holidays and then we ask, we don't ask people to rate the other options, the previous options, but we do ask them to rate the new option and then rate the new option in alongside of the other options. So you'll, they'll still be able to pick their favorite of all of the options.
What does everybody think about that?
I like the idea that it looks like we got consensus from the majority of the board for two, so I think that's a great starting point. And if there are some little minor tweaks, I'm not talking like, but if there's a little movement that we could reduce the delta even more, why not? And then still have that growth in Towano, the growth opportunity in Towano, I think that would be, like, so not mess with Towano too much because it looks like that's pretty good, but.
Mr. Kelly?
I'm sorry. It's the more constraints you give, the more challenging it all becomes.
Right.
So, so the consultant, so let's call 10% option four. So, so option four would be developed, sent to the public without the school board looking at it? Because, because I mean, it could, it could conceive that option four becomes option four and we're like, no, we're good, we'll take the three we have and run with them. So, or not, I mean, I don't know. So, so, so I guess, and with it being the 12th of December-
Timing is the issue. Affecting the timeline of the survey process and trying to get toward February, you would have to have that option out very quickly for comment and then very quickly that information would need to be provided to the board, maybe or maybe not before a meeting, just depending on how significant the changes are.
So our next meeting after this is the second?
Yeah.
So if the map gets developed, comes to us on the second and we say, yeah, let's see what they think, see what the public thinks about it, or we say, no, we're good, and then goes out for two weeks for a survey, one week? Because I also think too, people will pay attention more in January than they will on the 26th of December.
And the consultant has said that they will do another voiceover for a presentation that we could also post online, like we did for these options, to explain the changes that were made if a new map is created or a significantly altered map is created. The timeline is an issue.
Yeah, we're not sure if getting to 10% would be a significantly altered map. If, if you were to bring it down a little bit and it wasn't considered a significantly altered map, it's gonna make the process flow that much better. So we'd need to go back and see what's possible and I think the intention would be to push that to the board first and then push it to the public.
Yeah, so, so an option two, we go, we go from, from what is currently 31% differential to 15%, so steps in the right direction. Unfortunately, Towano is our base, is our basement for the spread, so, so if you're looking at, if you're looking at Berkeley-
Right.
If you just look at Berkeley, it's, you're gonna have to move some kids from Berkeley to Farnesby. Because Blair, if you put, put free and reduced kids in Blair, then you're upping them up to 43 and so then it starts to get complicated.
You can't, you can't move Towano too much, so to your point, that is sort of static. But what I, we don't even know what 10% looks like and that's what I'm struggling with. It may be, to your point, Mr. Kelly, that it's not, not acceptable, but we don't know that.
Yep.
And, and I would like to see that, but I can't unilaterally tell staff to do that, so I'm curious if other-
I would be interested in seeing an option four, but seeing it before it goes to the public.
Yes, or at the same time as the public, right.
I agree.
Yes? Yes, okay.
Before it goes for a survey, I guess, to the public.
Correct, yes, because we may, yes, we may decide that it's not viable before it goes to-
Right.
Thank you, Ms. Overkamp Smith. So does that-
Yeah, so we have the consensus of the board to go back and take option two only to look at the possibility of making tweaks to bring the delta down to 10%. Or do you want them to look at all three options and do the best one?
Well, I mean, the, the delta for option one is 17 right now. So I guess it would depend to me on giving it up to the consultant and saying, what would be the easier option to tweak to make the delta smaller? And if that's, if the consultant thinks that's going from option one and tweaking versus option two and tweaking, I'm okay with that, but I don't know what you guys-
I mean, I think we just tell him to give us a 10% option and see what he thinks.
Yes, I agree.
Okay, yeah.
Don't come up with a baseline, just, you know, don't-
Yeah, that's fine.
I think that gives much more flexibility, so thank you.
And if they could fix the anomalies within the neighborhoods that were unintentional-
Sure.
-sooner rather than later, I think that'd be better.
Yep.
Okay, okay.
Thank you.
So anything, anything else on middle school, okay. All right, that brings us to 7.03. All right, that brings us to 7.05 high school redistricting. So just as a, before we jump into the conversation, just as a review, we added high school redistricting to our contract when we were redistricting middle school because it was cost-effective and because last year we asked for additional high school space in our CIP and the county took that, took that space out and sent a clear message to us in their budget message that they would not consider additional space for several years and that we should explore redistricting because in their view that we had capacity at one school. So we have explored that, I would say exhaustively. And we have, since the last school board meeting, had a chance as a board to see high school maps. We saw this for the first time and we've had a chance to digest them. And we have also in the interim solicited feedback from the public. So now that we've had that time to review the maps ourselves and we're at the point where we can have a a conversation that I, with I think that as much information as there is possible to gather at this point in time and to review the maps and review public feedback. And so I guess let's do this first, if we could review the survey data first and then go to the next piece.
At this time, we had 1,681 surveys from the community and a larger attendance at the meetings, the community meetings also. Going to leave the data up for the, the public to see for a few moments. Summary slide, this is with the preferred options. Just a reminder for the public, the first three options were minimal movement involving three different neighborhoods. Number five was redistricting 700, 800 students at high school level. And option number six was to not redistrict. That was always an option the board put forward.
And was option six always in the survey? Okay, yeah, I thought, I just wanted to correct that.
Yes, per board request, option six was always there as an option from the beginning.
Thank you.
Demographics of those who took part in the survey. Leave it up for a moment for the, the public to see. Again, all of this will be made public this evening on our website. And if the board has questions, we are taking Kopey's notes so we can go back to the consultant and ask and respond to those questions of the board. Thank you, Madam Chair.
Thank you very much, Dr. Heron. Before we start talking about the options, I thought it would be good to, I think throughout this process of feedback through emails that we've gotten from citizens and from the survey data, I think there are some urban legends, perhaps we'll call them, out there that I thought we could take some time to clarify with the public. And so if any, any board member got questions that they answered with citizens that they would like the, the public at large to be aware of, I think this would be a really good time to do that. So, what does anyone, would anyone like to offer an answer to any question that they got from citizens so that everyone would like to have the same piece of information? Okay, I'll start. One of the assertion, one of the things that we've heard a lot about is people going to high schools where they should not be going. And I am trying to find the answer to that question. The school board did ask about out-of-zone requests to schools. Do you have that answer, Sandy? Mrs. Young, would you answer that question, please?
Okay, for Jamestown, it said out of, outside WJCC, the non-resident staff was one. And from Lafayette High School, it was for 12, 21. And, and one from War Hill. So we're, we're looking at like 24 students that are out of zone. It says at Jamestown. Isn't that what I'm looking at?
That was requested.
No, it's a request, okay. Oh, I'm sorry, okay. Yeah, it says 11.
So 11 people are at Jamestown High School who, who are approved to be there by this division by request?
That are approved.
That are approved. Is that correct, Ms. Bujor? 12? It's 12? Okay. So, another...
I think Ms. Bujor can set this in context compared to other high schools to give you a sense of the out-of-zone requests by high school as well. Thank you, Ms. Bujor.
Good evening, Madam Chair, members of the board.
Thank you.
So, yes, for Jamestown High School for this most current year, we had 23 requests. 12 of them were approved, 11 of them were denied. And the majority of those 12 that were approved were renewals. So they were higher, not 10th, 11th, 12th grades.
Older kids, older students.
Yes, ma'am.
Okay.
What would get them an approval? Originally get them approval, so?
Majority are either residents or non-resident staffs.
Staffs.
Children of employees. If you recall, we recently revised the policy that supports this process because this is done at the discretion of the board. And the policy limited the considerations that we would look at moving forward, recognizing that our, our, our capacity enrollment were, were growing. And so the predominant reasons we have for sixth grade, 612 are for employee considerations for requests. We also have custodial care as an option for K5.
Thank you very much. And a similar topic, we also heard about people who were not, who are misrepresenting their address to, to go to a certain school of their choice. And I just wanna clarify that misrepresenting information on an, on an enrollment form is a class four misdemeanor, right? And therefore the jurisdiction of law enforcement, correct?
Correct, it's fraudulent activity.
Correct, so therefore it's not the jurisdiction of a school division to investigate fraud.
Okay.
Thank you. Any other?
Does that ever happen?
Are you investigated for fraud?
Well, no, to be investigated for out-of-zone fraud. I mean, I'm...
We've had, we've had a few situations that have been brought to our attention and we have turned, made those aware. But they, those, those situations also did not get approved for out-of-zone.
So the vast majority of these zone requests are from staff and...
Majority are from staff, yes, ma'am.
Okay, that's...
It's actually a recruitment thing for staff as well to, to bring students to the school of their choice. And obviously impacts very few students and less because of there's no room in the school.
And we have had to say no to more and more staff on their requests as capacity has become less fluid.
So this people who are emailing us saying, oh, there are lots of people that are attending a particular high school that are cheating about their residency in order to go to this school. We're just taking their word for it? We're not investigating it or, because it's a, it's a...
It's not our jurisdiction.
It's not our jurisdiction?
Well, in order to be able to enroll, that we have different requirements that, that parents have to present. So if they meet those enrollment requirements at the school level, that's really a school-based process.
And so at some point, you know, there is a review process and they are, we are looking at their documentation to ensure that they are indeed...
Correct.
Documentation they present.
The documentation they present.
Correct.
No, incomplete as some of that might be. Yeah, you don't have, you don't have the investigative powers or the resources.
We do not have an investigator to, correct.
Not our jurisdiction.
Correct. But if they don't have the, what they're, what's required for enrollment, they are not allowed to enroll until they provide that information.
And another, just another one that I think we heard a lot of is that Jamestown High School is not over capacity. And I think that it might be okay to say that it, that it's over capacity, perhaps some of that, some of the community there doesn't mind. But, but I think that to say it's not over capacity is, is not an accurate statement, so.
That would not be an accurate statement. In fact, we have 18 teachers currently roaming from class to class due to a lack of space. They don't have their own classroom to set up and wait for students to come to them. And we also have several classes that are currently taking place in the lecture theater because of the, the use of classroom space. So they really are using the building to the full and beyond.
Anything else anyone would like to just point out that we heard a lot of? No, okay. So our, unless I'm mistaken, our options are sort of, there are five choices before the board right now with regard to high school redistricting. In no particular order, the first is to do nothing, do not redistrict, do not add trailers. The second would be, do not, do not redistrict and add trailers to Jamestown, which has, is over capacity. The third option is to spot redistrict. And there are three maps that represent spot redistricting. The fourth option would be to spot redistrict but phase in the approach with, starting with incoming freshmen. And then the fifth option would be to redistrict, which there's one map that represents that, option number five. So we could discuss each of the five options or we could go roundtable, whichever you all prefer. If we do roundtable, maybe each of us could talk about what we would and would not support. Or if we can just go through each of the five options and talk, talk about pros and cons of each and, and our thoughts on that. So I will defer again to all of you to decide what you would like to do.
I'd like you to go through each of the options and have us discuss them. That would be my choice.
Okay. All right. First option would be do nothing, no, no redistricting, no trailers. So, Dr. Heron, perhaps you'd like to kind of talk about what you just said about what that looks like at Jamestown, if we...
Obviously Jamestown is over capacity, although I just had asked Ms. Barnes for the, for the numbers for the next year. We're moving between most likely and low and the anticipated number of students coming to Jamestown next year. If we go with the most likely projection, we could add 20 students to Jamestown. If we go with the low projection, which has been more accurate for the last number of years, we would add 13 students to Jamestown next year. The year after that would go to 26, we would add, sorry, another 26 to Jamestown. On the most likely, we would add only eight students the following year to Jamestown in the second year. And then actually in, in 2020, the numbers in Jamestown are anticipated to go down by 11 in low projections and up by 15. So, yes, we are overcrowded at Jamestown. The numbers are moving slowly depending on whether low or most, or lower most likely projections are correct. And so it will have an impact if we do, don't redistrict and don't put in trailers. Trailers are certainly an option for consideration. They're a temporary option, for sure. Every system uses them. In fact, I spoke with superintendents today and everyone I spoke to had them in their system and I think Virginia Beach has got over 100 right now. So it's, it's not ideal, but we, we will make sure students get a good experience no matter what the board decides.
So and the, and the cost of doing nothing is zero. I mean, the cost to student, there's a student impact and a staff impact, but the, the dollar outlay is zero, right? The utilization score is poor as it is on all of the options. You know, the longevity, I mean. Proximity, it favors pretty well, less than 1% of the students would go to their, you know, to, to a school that's not their first or second closest. There's an 18% delta between, in, with free and reduced lunch between the high schools. All the neighborhoods are kept together except for, is that little funny little thing? No, that doesn't, yeah, yeah, that's just, okay. So, all right, so any thoughts on do nothing, no trailers? Come on, someone say something.
I'm not in favor of trailers just because it's not the fiscally responsible thing to do when we could choose to do something that doesn't cost, an ongoing cost. So, you know, that would be an hit to our operational budget and so something else would not get funded. And we have a lot of, last year we had an $800,000 shortfall and I'm sure we'll have another shortfall this year. So to me, with security issues and with the ongoing costs, last time we had trailers, we had them for seven or eight years. It's almost $2,000 a month to have a trailer. I think we would maybe put five trailers there. The cost to put the trailers there initially would be upwards to $60,000 to $80,000. That's per trailer to equip it with security cameras and IT and I'm, I'm not in support of trailers. That I'm, I'm firm on.
I'm not in favor because it's an operating. I don't think it's the most fiscally responsible thing for us to do and they're not safe. So that's, that's kind of, I, I think you do nothing and you don't have trailers and then my, my feeling about that option is, okay. Do nothing, don't add trailers, reevaluate next year. That's my feeling for that option.
That number two?
No, that's do nothing.
That's number one, do nothing, yeah. Yeah. Ms. Young, Mrs. Young, do you have any?
I don't have anything to say about option number, number one. I'm, I'm for number two where you actually add trailers at the, at Jamestown.
Mr. Kelly?
I'm, I'm obviously for waiting a year, thinking about, thinking about what the capacity looks like, what a capacity looks like at War Hill. And so I'm not, I'm not an option one where we do nothing. I, I am, I do not have a visceral reaction to trailers on a temporary basis as long as it's a, a path to get us to a final solution, whether that be expansions or whether that be a new high school at some point. So, so I'm not in favor of, of doing nothing either way. But I am, I am, I am, I'm, I'm okay with trailers not being a permanent solution but being a segue into, into what is a permanent solution, whatever that may, whatever the community conversation develops around what a permanent solution looks like.
I, I agree with Mr. Kelly regarding that. I mean, trailers are not ideal, but they will offer that space if it's a temporary solution. And I think that we've heard time and time again from the community that we may have not effectively articulated our plan and we're still working on it, so we need to be able to do that.
So you would be in favor of, like Mr. Kelly, putting off trailers for a year? Or, so do not redistrict and not put trailers in next year?
I don't think that's what Mr. Kelly said.
You said put trailers in next year?
As, as if the administration feels that we need to have
Oh, I'm sorry, I misunderstood.
Some capacity at, at Jamestown next year for trailers, then we should certainly entertain that. But it should be, but it's, it is a segue to what is the permanent solution. Whether we come, whether we as a conversation come up with expansions of the schools or whether we come up with... or whether we come up with, with a new school at some point. But I'm not completely adverse to trailers as a non-starter.
Madam Chair, if I could go back to that. So I think putting trailers there puts the cart before the horse without, without a clear understanding of what our funding partners are prepared to do. So the minute we put trailers there, we no longer have a capacity issue at Jamestown. So we've bumped the CIP back a year. We've said this board is going to reevaluate what the plan is, expansions of fourth high school. So I think to put trailers there before we decide what we're going to do is the cart before the horse. So I'm, again, not in favor of trailers, certainly not for the fall. We need to reevaluate and see which direction this community is going to go.
I, I think that by putting, we haven't had the CIP conversation yet, but by delaying our CIP request to take a breather year and.
Can I ask me, by the way?
Chairwoman?
Madam Chair.
Can I have a, can I, can I also say my option when I support?
Sure.
Thank you. I thought you were, no, I thought you were done.
No, sir, but go ahead, Dr. Beers.
I'm supporting option two. I don't like trailers. Nobody likes trailers. Trailers have been used in the past to be one of the reasons for supporting the building of a third high school. And I know, I consider it temporary. I think, I know that we have an elementary school to be built on the books. And talking to at least one member of the Board of Supervisors who is a funding partner very much supports a long-range plan that leads to a fourth high school. The Board of Supervisors knows that over the next ten or twelve years, our population, student population is going to grow. They already know we're going to need an elementary school. And from my conversations, they're also aware of the fact that regardless of what we do, we will need another high school, but it may not be for eight to ten years. But what they would like to see is us start to plan now, not wait, but start to plan for the ultimate building of a fourth high school.
So you're okay with trailers for eight to ten years?
Yeah, it's, it's happened before. And it, I, I am not that, it's not the best of all possible worlds. But I have seen enough schools in Mariko County, which is considered to have one of the best school systems in the Commonwealth. And a number of their schools have trailers and have had trailers for quite a while. And they are also in the process of building additional schools because their population, student population is growing. I don't, I, I don't see quite as, as many adverse effects of having trailers. As I said the last time. I have several grandchildren who have been in trailers off and on for three or four years. Those trailers were there long before they came to that school. And that particular elementary school happens to be just about the very best elementary school in Mariko County. So as a temporary solution, I don't. My concern about redistricting right now is it, it's clear to me that at least those who responded to the survey prefer that we not redistrict at this time, but at, at least be aware of the overcrowding and try to deal with that. That's all, that's all I have to say.
Dr. Heron, can you talk a little bit about trailers and interruptions in learning based on anything? Weather, are there any times when students have to be removed from a trailer because they're not as safe as they would be if they were in a, in a more solid structure?
The only time we would bring students into a building might be in the event of a tornado or something like that. We've had trailers at Berkeley, I believe, for four years now. We've never brought the students into the main building for a safety reason. And they've, they've had good, good instruction there.
Oh, okay. So I am opposed to trailers for several reasons. First, I, I think there's an opportunity cost in the, in the, in the operating budget. And I, I'm not interested in, in spending money when there's a, a cost, more cost-effective way to ease overcrowding at one school. I also am very concerned about the safety. My, I, I am under the impression that trailers have been evacuated in severe weather at, at Berkeley. And also I think it's of note that our very own fire department has taken the lead on a regional level to put trauma response kits in all the schools because of their concerns about safeties in the schools. And I think of our fire department is working with all of our regional schools and regional fire departments and police departments because they're concerned about student safety. Additionally, we're spending millions of dollars to redesign the entrances of schools that students in trailers won't benefit from. So from a safety perspective, times are different now and I am concerned about that. Also, we have asked, we have decided as a board to, when we're about to adopt a CIP that gives us a year of, of kind of breathing room to, to think about what we need, whether it's a fourth high school or three additions. If trailers are part of a plan for a fourth high school, that's part of, that's, you have to do that. But we haven't made that decision yet. And so I think, I agree with Ms. Ombi that it's putting the cart before the horse. And if we do add trailers at, at, at our high schools, I think it's simply and it, I think it comes to fruition to what Dr. Beers said, we're talking many, many years, which I don't think is good for our kids. I think it's the camel's nose under the tent. I think it just delays our very real needs for space. And I'm also concerned.
The camel under the.
And I think that it's.
What is that? I'm not sure I understand.
And then it's, and also if you put trailers at Jamestown, does then that negatively impact your ability to expand on that space? Would the trailers go where a future expansion would go? Or am I misunderstanding that?
Honestly, I would need to look at the maps again because I can't remember the potential placement of trailers compared to the additions. I do know there was a site, we did have trailers at Jamestown apparently several years ago. I'm not sure if Mr. Weaver would know where the trailers would go. Would it be in the place where we're thinking of doing an addition? I'm kind of putting you on the spot here with Mr. Snipes not here tonight.
I know where the trailers are going to go. I'm not exactly sure where the additions would go. I have not seen that.
We'd need to get that answer to the board.
That's a concern. If you're putting, if you're putting something where you need something else to go, that, that would be a concern.
Can I ask Dr. Heron a question? Dr. Heron, right now, if we did absolutely nothing, between now and the end of next year, how many students are we over that you need to have space for? Is, is, it's my thinking that you probably need a couple of trailers right now for next year. Am I, am I wrong about that? To deal with the space, to deal with, with the number of students that are, that are in that school?
I think Dr. Worley is, is managing the building exceptionally well in that it is over capacity. And I know Ms. Barnes is probably pulling up the exact number of students we're over right now in current enrollment. I can't remember off the top of my head. It was. Got so many numbers. So we're one hundred and nine over now. In theory, if you were to put two trailers there, that's the equivalent of four classrooms, I believe, twenty-five students per classroom. But, you know, this, this school is managing the extra numbers in the building right now. You know, depending, we can't really predict to the actual student how many more we may get in Jamestown next year. Low prediction is thirteen more next year, which would not completely adversely impact the building. Most likely prediction is twenty more. When we start to look at programmatically, it's more complicated because we have, we're in the first two years of the concourse nine at Jamestown. And I know Dr. Worley was planning to put year two of that program. She needed dedicated space for that. So it could have programmatic implications. They do, they do need this space. And I don't know if Dr. Carolyn has any more information that I may have forgotten.
You, oh, okay.
Well, she's unable to use the lecture hall for, for regular events now because I think they're teaching drivers and something else in there.
And we just, this board decided not to put trailers at Jamestown this year, is that correct? We, that was part of our budget retreat in January.
Yes.
And we decided not to put trailers there.
That's correct.
Okay.
Madam Chair, if I could just reiterate my, my point. I think, again, going back to the metaphor, the cart before the horse, I would like to take this year to evaluate and get a sense from the community, do we want to expand three high schools, which I don't think precludes building a fourth high school? Or are we going to build a fourth high school recognizing that we need an elementary school and we need to finish James Blair and we need a central office? Two, probably before we need a fourth high school. And right now the numbers don't really warrant a, a fourth high school. And then there are programmatic issues if we had four. So for me, it's no trailers next year. And in that year, we need to decide what the next step is. So, and if the next step is expansion, then that, maybe that precludes trailers. If the next step is a high school, then okay, then we do trailers for another seven or eight years. But, but we don't know that right now. We don't know that right now. And we've said as a board, we need to wait a year to decide which direction we're going immediately with our high schools, expand them or build a fourth one. Recognizing there are other needs too.
Dr. Beers?
Our projections over the last twenty years have been incredibly accurate. And I don't see a major shift in our population over the next ten years. So my assumption is, is that in the most likely scenario, our student, the student growth rate will proceed at the level at which it has been doing. The math that I've done is in terms of overcapacity, if you use eighty-five percent, but you could use ninety percent. But if you use eighty-five percent, we have almost five hundred high school students over capacity. And in the next ten years, according to those projections, we're going to have at least five hundred more students. That's a thousand students.
Dr. Heron.
So I, so my thinking all along has been.
That's wrong. That's wrong.
There is a temporary solution, not the best. But ultimately, right now, and starting tomorrow, we start a long-range plan, getting prepared to build a fourth high school. The numbers will be there. They're not there now, of course not, but they will be there.
What the projections are?
I'm sorry.
I, I think.
We need clarification on those numbers.
On the numbers. I think we need clarification on the numbers because I think we're only, is it four hundred?
Three hundred. Three hundred. In twenty-twenty-seven, we're over capacity by three hundred seats at the high school level using the low numbers. Is that, is that correct?
I didn't use the low numbers. I used the most likely numbers, assuming that.
So then it's four hundred if you use the most likely?
Yeah. It's actually four hundred and fifty.
Just, yeah, four hundred and fifty.
But is that factoring in high school expansion?
No.
No. No. So if we expand three high schools to around fifteen hundred apiece.
Can we stick to redistricting? Yeah. And I know it's very hard, but, so if, if I'm hearing everybody correctly, option one, which is do nothing, no redistricting, no trailers, the majority of the board does not accept that. So we just strike that. Is that correct? Okay, is that correct? Yeah, okay. What was that? Okay. So option number two, again, in no particular order, was do not redistrict and add trailers to Jamestown. So we've kind of already had that conversation, but we have not talked about what the cost is. So can you tell us what a cost would be for setup and then ongoing annual cost of doing that? Sorry.
Monthly cost is about seventeen hundred dollars a month.
Per trailer?
For leasing.
Trailer?
The setup cost, furniture, technology, communications, site preparation, depends on the site, if trailers been there before or not. I don't have a total number.
In our SBQ, Mr. Snipes said it was around eighty thousand dollars.
Eighty thousand to set it up?
Mm-hmm. But I'm not clear if that's per trailer.
Okay. Plus about three thousand dollars per month if there's two trailers. Is that correct?
Sounds.
Eighty grand seems like a lot of.
It's, it's in the SBQ?
I'm just telling.
All right.
It's in the SBQ. It's in the SBQ. It's in your SBQ.
No, eighty thousand for setup?
Set up. To set it up, to, a trailer. The security, the furniture, the IT. It's, it's in the packet.
Dr. Beers, I think it's just mainly the site preparation to bring electricity and things to the trailer. There's an initial setup fee that is incurred and then technology access as well. And that, that's a one, it's a one-time.
This is part of a redistricting conversation.
Well, if you are evaluating the student impact, cost estimate, utilization proximity, so to economic neighborhoods, the things that we've, but cost is a factor, right? Because there are options that cost nothing. And there are options that cost. So I think you have to, if you're going to have a discussion, I think the cost of it is very relevant.
So ten point five million was the proposed cost to expand Jamestown.
Right, okay. So, but no redistricting, adding trailers. There is a mark, there's a cost, a setup cost and a monthly cost for the trailers. And proximity stays the same at less than one percent going to their, you know, first, so ninety-nine percent go to the first or second closest school. The delta is eighteen percent between high schools for the free and reduced lunch. So.
So once they're set up, that first year, that expense goes away.
Yeah, just the rent, just the rental. Yeah. I'm sorry?
Hundred and eleven.
Sounds more accurate because different figures, but when you pull together the setup, the site setup and the furniture, technology and security.
Closer to a hundred thousand, eighty hundred.
Yeah, it's closer. It's about a hundred thousand. These are, these are estimates. We haven't got an actual specific price on them, but we're in the process of, of that if needed.
Madam Chair, and then I just wanted to make it clear that that comes out of our operating budget. So there's an opportunity cost. So that ten point five million is out of our, our capital budget. So something will not get funded. It will not get funded. It comes out of our operating budget and it will be coming out of that budget for seven or eight years.
Although, I mean, I, I agree with you, but there are trailers coming off the budget because of the middle school expansion. So one could say it's a wash. I would not agree with that, but I think to be clear, we, we need to be fair about that.
Yeah, I mean, there's, there's a lot of, there's a lot of sides to this argument and, you know, we should just make sure that we're all, you know, respectful and understanding of each other's, each other's opinion and position. So, so right now there are eighteen traveling teachers at Jamestown.
That's correct, sir.
So if I took a hundred and nine kids out of there, will there no longer be eighteen traveling kids, teachers at Jamestown?
Depends on the classes we have. Analysis.
Just doesn't feel like that there, that that would.
Would reduce it somewhat.
Reduce it somewhat, but I can't, can't go to zero. And so if, and so if I, let's say we redistrict and we're all at ninety-nine percent at all three schools. And then we have another hundred and eighty-four kids show up at War Hill, like we had this year. Eighty-three above our projection because we, we had projected something like a hundred and one and we had a hundred and eighty-three or somewhere in there. Then we're looking at trailers. For some, some level of, so, 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 while we're having a redistricting conversation, I'm not sure that cost to put trailers. a redistricting conversation, I'm not sure that cost to put trailers up is necessarily relevant because they could happen anywhere. And if we, and if we redistrict and we're all at 100% and then we have 64 go six lanes and there's people buy those houses in the north end of the county that are being built and they move in with kids, we've got capacity issues. How are we going to solve those capacity issues? We're going to put trailers up. So, so, you know.
But then presumably there would be a plan that has been agreed upon by our funders. So our direction will be clearer. So, right. Okay. So I think if I understand correctly, a majority of the board would support not redistricting and adding trailers to Jamestown. Is that correct? Yes? 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 Okay. All right. So that brings us to option number three, which is really three options embedded in one, which is to spot redistrict. So that's options one, two and three. First option moves 113 children, second one, 131 children, third one, 94 children. The cost associated with that would be, would be nothing. Utilization is the same as the others, all bad. Longevity, I mean, I keep calling that utilization. Proximity for all three maps varies a little bit. Number one is worse than number two. Numbers two and three are a little bit better.
Actually, you could say utilization and longevity are bad. Because they're all in the high 90s.
They're all bad. Yeah. I mean, these are all bad.
Right.
There, there's no good choice here. I mean, I think you're right, Mr. Kelly. The delta between high schools with free and reduced lunch number would be 13%. So any, any thoughts on spot redistricting, maps one, two or three?
Madam Chair, I, I struggle with having one neighborhood take the hit. And it, it doesn't, it, it moves a needle some. I, I personally would go with map five. And then everyone is in the same boat. But, so for me, I struggle with having, picking, handpicking a neighborhood. Map five is a beautiful map, as Ms. Humble pointed out. I don't know why map five didn't happen 10 years ago. Should have happened 10 years ago.
Um, okay. So any, anyone else on spot redistricting?
I'm opposed. I'm opposed to doing any redistricting, especially since the longevity is poor, no matter what we do, even for map five. And we're disrupting a lot of families if we go to map five. So I'm totally opposed to any redistricting, period. For any, and option one, two and three, I don't think accomplishes the, the balance that we would need to have. And, and we're still uprooting families, so I'm opposed to all of them.
So, but it is normal to spot redistrict. I mean, that's not an unheard of thing in, in school divisions. So I just.
And I know that.
So I just want to be, I just want to be clear about that. That it is done places. This board may choose not to do it, but it's not, it's not.
Unheard of.
Unheard of. And it, and it, it happens for this very reason. Yes, Ms. Humble?
Well, and the other thing to consider is, is the phase in approach. So I think if we were to, to pick one, two or three and then some conversation, some, some phasing in of either seniors, juniors or sophomores, any combination, I think mitigates whatever little capacity issues you impact at Jamestown. So it's just hard to know. If you, if you phase anyone in, it's a wash.
Okay. So am I clear, am I understanding that the majority of the board does not support spot redistricting? Is that correct? Okay. All right. So the fourth option is to spot redistrict and phase it in. And I know you don't want to talk about cost, Mr. Kelly, but there is a cost associated with this and I think we should be clear about what, what it would be. If we phased in beginning with rising freshmen, so, so no, no students would be moved from their current school, what would that cost on an annual basis for three years? What's, I think one bus driver, one.
I think.
Yeah.
Not sure we have a specific cost, but it's hard without having the actual roots and everything else.
Right. Good evening.
Hi.
So it's about $100,000 to buy a school bus. And to staff that bus for three years while we spot redistrict and move kids out and, but still bus to their current location, it's about $105,000 with benefits for their salary over three years. So for one bus, one driver over the three-year process, we're looking at about $225,000 per year.
And you'd have to buy a new bus to do that? You'd have to, we'd have to add a bus to the fleet?
If we're going into the same, based on the logistics and the length of the runs and the timeframes that we have in maintaining, keeping them under an hour and still have to get to our next bell, if we're going into the same neighborhood for two different places, going to two different directions, yes, ma'am.
For three years?
Yes. And that's per bus.
Right.
Right.
What are we talking, are these options?
This is spot redistricting with a phase in, beginning with, with a.
Of any of those three?
Yeah. This is the one that we talked about doing last.
And that doesn't imply that it's every neighborhood. Some of the neighborhoods, because seniors choose, a lot of our seniors choose not to ride the bus or for whatever reason, don't ride the bus. And so we, we kind of can, those numbers are flexible. Freshmen, sophomore, maybe 50% of the juniors tend to ride the bus. So it may not be for every bus. We could move some around, but there is a potential to have to buy and that would be what would be the cost for one.
All right. Thank you very much. Any questions about spot redistricting and phasing in? So that's the option I favor because it balances, even though, again, there is, I would rather move rising freshmen and beyond than, than go to trailers, particularly because we don't have in place right now trailers, a plan related to trailers. And, and so I think that that is the, the thing to do because I think it buys us time. It buys us four years, which is a minimum of what we'll need before we get permanent space. And that's my favorite, but no.
The reason I don't like that one, I mean, I just don't like the idea of you having for kids at one family at multiple different schools for their high school. So that just is hard for the family.
Okay. All right. So that's a no?
For me, I, I, I prefer option five. Just rip off the Band-Aid and just do it, but that's not going to, I, I'm in the minority. So the other options seem more painful to me for more people.
Okay. So that segues nicely into the fifth and final option, which is to redistrict straight up. So it impacts roughly 700 kids. Proximity doesn't, doesn't fare as well. 6% of the students would not be going to their first or second high school. It, it equals, balances socioeconomic evenly. And so any thoughts on that one? Can you talk into the mic?
That's my favorite map.
Okay. Do you want to elaborate on that?
For, for SES, it's a map that should have happened 10 years ago. I'm, I'm confused as to why it didn't happen 10 years ago. That's, that's the reason why we're here today. All of our schools will be equally at capacity, but it just, we're not that far away from it being equally over capacity now. So it sends a clear message to our funding partners, look, we redistricted and we still need space.
If, if, if we decide in the next year that expansions are the, as a community, we decide that expansions are the way to go, I'm not necessarily adverse to option five, with the exception that Monticello Woods has to go to Jamestown. Their only, their only exit is within sight almost of Jamestown. So I mean, I would, I think, I think, I think if we look ourselves in the proximity eye, we can't, we can't get that one. But, I mean, and that's, and that's, that's, that's a pretty premature statement. I'm not, I'm not in favor of doing it next year. But if, you know, if we decide to expand, expand the three schools and then we go out and we expand Jamestown, I mean, this would be certainly something I would come back and revisit at, at that time. But I think right now, it's premature to do that. I think the fact that we have the map explains to our funding partners that we need, we need capacity in order to get all of these things together. So, so while it's, it's an intriguing map, it's not one that I favor doing this year or actually probably any year until we do the, until we decide as a community that expansions are the right answer. If we decide that building new high school is the right answer, then we got to look at something different, but.
Any other comments on map five? Option five, whatever we're calling it?
Just to, to piggyback on that, I know option five does not have the votes, so I'm just pontificating here about the fact that for me, this vision of a, a very nicely balanced system without people freaking out between, you know, one school or the other school, I would, I would like there to be this beautiful map, but it's probably not going to happen. But I, I don't see, like, otherwise, what's happening is that we won't get a high school if we're going to get a high school. It would be eight years from now, right? So I just see this inequity being exacerbated in the next eight years and just getting worse and worse and worse unless we, as a school board, really take to heart some of the messages that we're getting from people that are saying, we recognize that there are inequities and we, we are going to fund and make up the difference with programming and, and pay attention to, to some of that piece of the equation.
Part of the challenge of that is Zillow will never rate all three of our schools tied at one. And so there's always going to be a one, there's always going to be a three or maybe even a four. And so, you know, it's, it's just not, and, and people, people when they move in are always going to go pull up the Zillow and say, wow, we got to be, because it's, but the fact of the matter is you are getting a WJCC high school education and you can get a great education at any of our high schools.
Well, and that is what is irritating about this whole thing because Lafayette High School is an awesome.
Some school.
High school.
Correct.
It is with awesome programming, awesome teachers. So it just is irritating that there are people who have a negative viewpoint unnecessarily. It just irritates me.
Absolutely.
Oh, I think, I think those kind of comments. I'm tired, I'm tired of those comments. Those are ridiculous comments. There's never been one study that shows that your property values go down if you're, if you live in a neighborhood and your kids go to Lafayette. And I'm tired of that. But also, on the other hand, is that Lafayette students do, do just as well and in some tastes better than students. And I don't want to set one high school against another, but I, but, but we have members of the community that actually try to do that. And, and I really resent that, is that if that other high school was so much better, their scores and their performances would be miles a high of poor old Lafayette and it's, they're not. Lafayette is just as good a high school as Jamestown and War Hill. And I, I do support, if there's a need for additional resources at Lafayette, then by God, let's get them. But let's stop talking about poor old Lafayette. My kids went to Lafayette many, many years ago when there were 1,900 students in that school and they banged into each other all the time between classrooms and they didn't drop their books and start swinging at each other. So it's, I, I'm sorry. This is really, I'm tired of it. I'm tired of people pitting one high school against another. We have, we have one of the best school systems in the state, if not the country. And those arguments that my property values are going to go down or my high school student will be traumatized, traumatized, they don't know what trauma is yet. When do they get out in the real world? So I'm, you know, I'm just, you know, I know I've been, I've been holding back with this, but it's really, you do a disservice, people do a disservice, parents do a disservice to their children. If they protect them so much because they're so afraid of what's out there in the world of the school, my God, what is going to happen when those kids are out in the real world and they get disappointed or they fail to get that job? So I'm, I want to hear more about all the good things that are going on in Lafayette because we don't hear enough of it and, and it's an extraordinary school. It really is, so. Okay, that's it.
I'm a little frightened of following that, Dr. Beers.
Well, can I follow, Dr. Beers?
Okay.
I, I agree completely with Dr. Beers. And I'll, and I won't say it quite so passionately, but I, I appreciate that passion. I do believe that there are real estate agents out there who say that, that, you know, you want to get your kid into one district versus the other. And I think they do those families a disservice. And I think, and I.
You're a disservice to us, please.
Right. I mean, the fact of the matter is people move to WJ, to James City County because, Williamsburg, James City County, because they, because of our schools. And, you know, whether, whether you're going to, to Stonehouse, Matoco, Hornsby, you know, Blair, Lafayette, Jamestown, you're going to get a great education. You're going to have the opportunity to have a great education. One of the things I think that having option five out there would certainly discourage real estate agents from saying those types of things because everybody's in play. And so at least we can get that out there for a while. But I, 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 I can't agree with you more, Dr. Beers.
And I, you know, just to sum it up is, and I know a lot of people who redistricted this almost 10 years. By two superintendents. We have had two superintendents in those 10 years. We've had umpteen boards and nobody has really addressed that until now. And, and, and so I don't think it's going to be, we're not going to solve it tomorrow. But sure, I, I, I look for the day out before, I hope I'm still around, not necessarily on the board, but it's just to be here, that, that will get, that will create more balance. And, you know, like you said, I, I, I think it is the best way to go. It's just right now, it's not the easiest. And I know we don't, it doesn't have to be easy, but I, I, I am, I'm still supporting the position that I took earlier this evening.
Can I talk now? So I, regarding map number five, I, I think this, it shows that, that, that the high school's student population can reflect the population of the community at large and not look like a mosaic. I think it shows that, that this is a community choice to do this or not do this. And I don't, not going to place value on whether it's right or wrong to do it, but I just think it demonstrates that it's a choice that we make. And to Dr. Beers' point, we make every day. I, I think without a funded, long-term plan, it causes too much disruption, which is why I wouldn't support it, even though I think it's lovely. Redistricting just because isn't normal. Spot redistricting is normal, but, which is why I supported that. But just redistricting 700 kids just because, without adding additional capacity is not normal. But I do think this map should be our goal. And. And but if it becomes something that we adopt, I think we have to be pretty certain that it's gonna stick five to 10 years, because that's how long it's going to take to... For students to realize the gains and to reduce those gaps. That's what social science suggests, anyway. I do wanna talk a little bit about the conversation about 10 years ago. I don't disagree, but I don't think anyone could have foreseen the differences. There were differences then, but those differences have been exacerbated. And those trends are what I'm worried about. Poverty has increased at double the rate of our population growth, and that is not going to stop. That's not going to go away. Our English language learner population is growing. All of our schools are incredible now. They're all amazing. I'm not worried about today. I'm worried about further out. If you look at divisions that are fully accredited, usually they're smaller than ours. I won't ask Mr. Thorpe to cite the data unless you have it handy. Do you have it handy?
Give me a moment.
But the larger you get, the easier it is to say, "Oh, well, you know, all but one of our schools are accredited." So I'm worried about... And so I'm glad we're having that conversation, because there are kids coming to our schools with social and emotional needs that we need to meet, and so that they can learn in an environment that is accommodating to them. You know, our kids are coming to us, experiencing social and economic stresses of living in a community with high housing costs and low wages. And so there's more than one way to address that. It doesn't have to be done with redistricting, but it does, in my view, have to be done, because I'm worried about five years from now, not now. You know, so that's where I'm coming from in terms of meeting kids' needs. And I do... I also think the communication piece is clear. There are parts of this country where... I can't speak to Zillow, Mr. Kelly, but there are... When you go into property information on our localities and you type in your address, what schools you go to are there, there are localities that refuse to do that, because they don't want to create a contract with the homeowner that, "Hey, this is where your kids are gonna go." I think we have to do a better job of saying, "This is a growing school division, and you cannot expect that your attendance zones are gonna stay the same for 10 years." I think about what the work that we have to do, and a lot of the decisions we make impact 20 years out when we build a building that's 20 or more. You know, I think about that two-year-old we're serving in Bright Beginnings and may stay with us till they're 21. You know, that's... That work that this division does that's 20 years out is usually really with the administration. Most of our work is in that kind of three-to-five-year sweet zone. I mean, our CIP is five years out. We have a 10-year horizon, but the adopted plan is five years out. Our terms are four years. Our superintendent contracts are three to five years. I hope we have many of them, but that's our strategic plan is five years. Our policy review is on a five-year cycle. You know, people talked about not putting a Band-Aid on this. You know, sometimes you need a Band-Aid. And so from my perspective, this... Whatever decision we make tonight, I think sticks for four to five years because of the CIP decision we're gonna be making, because we know we're not gonna have any new capacity coming on. And I think that's okay. I don't think that's bad. I think that's sound planning. The only thing that we do in one-year cycles or the operating budget, but everything else is kind of in that area. And so I think that that is... I think that's sound planning, and I think that's sound work on all of our parts. So, you know, with that, I think it's pretty clear that the majority believes that no redistricting and adding trailers is the best thing to do for our division at this time. And I would add that that is the collective wisdom of this board in its entirety, all seven of us. And so moving forward, that is the decision that we have to honor, whether or not it's the decision we advocated for during this discussion. So I'll seek the guidance of this group to determine whether or not we should move forward with any discussion. From my perspective, there's no new data to gather. We had opportunity to review the maps after the last meeting. And I appreciate not only your active participation in this conversation, every single one of you has been nothing short of amazing and dedicated and really responsive to citizens, but all the citizens who wrote and who participated in the surveys, thank you. We make better decisions because of your input, so... So moving forward, the topic will not be on the agenda any further. All right, so that brings us to action items. 8.01 personnel items. May I have a motion, please?
Madam Chair, move approval of personnel actions as presented this evening.
Can I have a second?
Second.
Any discussion? It's been moved and seconded. Sersa, can you call the roll?
Mrs. Taylor?
Aye.
Mrs. Young?
Aye.
Dr. Beers?
Aye.
Ms. Hummel?
Aye.
Mr. Kelly?
Aye.
Ms. Oenby?
Aye.
Ms. Cook?
Aye.
Thank you. That brings us to item 8.02, approved minutes from November 14th, 2017 to November 28th, 2017.
Madam Chair, move approval of the minutes from the following meetings, November 14th, 2017, and November 28th, 2017.
Second, please.
Second.
Any discussion? It's been moved and seconded. Mrs. Sersa, will you call the roll, please?
Ms. Hummel?
Aye.
Mr. Kelly?
Aye.
Ms. Oenby?
Aye.
Mrs. Taylor?
Aye.
Mrs. Young?
Aye.
Dr. Beers?
Aye.
Ms. Cook?
Aye.
All right. Motion passes. That brings us to 8.03, fiscal year 2019, 2028 capital improvement plan. May I have a motion, please? Mr. Kelly, can I have a motion, please?
Madam Chair, move approval of the fiscal year 2019 to 20-year... Fiscal year 2028 superintendent's proposed capital improvement plan.
May I have a second, please?
Second.
Thank you, Mrs. Young. Dr. Heron, would you like to chat us through this?
Yes.
Minus where we've been?
Yes. Basically, I brought the plan to you. I think we've discussed it several times. At the last board meeting, the board asked me to make one change to the plan, that we would move back the design and expansion of the first of the three high schools, which would be Jamestown by one year, to allow time to take a step back and, you know, create a planning committee to really look at this in depth, so that we make a good decision as a board for our community. So my original proposed capital improvement plan is in front of you, and it's changed with board input from the last meeting. Everything else remains the same.
Anyone have any comments or questions?
So Madam Chair, if we push this... Push it back one year, and we come to a conclusion over the next year that maybe we wanna do War Hill first, we could always, in next year's budget, move War Hill into 2019, 20, and do the design work there, and then the expansion. Or if we wanna do Lafayette, or if we wanna stick to Jamestown. So I think it's prudent to do that versus, you know, doing Jamestown next year while we're still in the process of formulating what we're looking at for high school capacity. So the only... I guess the only concern I have, and we have it in there for elementary school construction. I'm not sure our elementary school capacity numbers show that we can last until 2028 without an elementary school.
Right.
But, you know, at least we have that in the plan for the new county administrator, whoever that might be, to enjoy considering that in the future.
Just to add to that, if the decision is made in the budget retreat that we would be putting trailers in at Jamestown, and the upfront costs are really great the first year, it seems like that's the greatest amount of... It's like setting it up, and then the leasing of it is nominal or not as much. That would inform, I think, the CIP and the decision as far as expansion, who goes next.
Right. The other thing, too, with the CIP, where we talk about central office design and construction, there has been a notional plan out there that there's a county building of which we have a couple of floors, and then the county has a couple of floors, and, you know, that all as a county headquarters building. So, you know, we have the numbers out there and the out ears, but I think that would be something that would... Essentially locating all of the county offices is certainly something that the county should consider doing, particularly as this county has well-outgrown Mounts Bay, but that's another board's decision and not mine.
Anything else? Okay. I just wanted, for the public's consumption, just to confirm, and you might have to correct me, Dr. Heron, but at elementary school, we're at 92% capacity across the level, and if you add pre-K, we're at 98%. Is that correct?
Yes. I'm gonna ask Ms. Barnes to come up and bring the enrollment figures with her, so that we can be exactly right. That sounds correct.
No pressure putting a new employee on the spot there.
Right. Sorry, Ms. Barnes. So if we're at 92% capacity at elementary school, 98% with pre-K, and at the high school level, across the board, we're at 96%. And optimal capacity for optimal educational flexibility is 85%. That's the universally accepted best practice. Is that right?
Sorry, the high school?
Typically, divisions start... The trigger point to start planning space is 90%. So we're beyond that at two levels, period, end of story. Okay? So I just wanna say that we rely on our reports every year in that real-time, you know, every annual update with Future Think, and they change slightly. But my... I just wanna caution people about focusing on minor changes year to year. You know, we should be focusing our best practices percentages and what's happening on the ground now for the foreseeable future. So whether you think growth is coming fast, whether you think growth is coming slowly, we need space now at two levels by any measure of generally accepted best practice, period. So, you know, I just wanna put that out there for the public to hear. And then I wanna ask a question about taking a break and not asking for additional space at the high school or elementary school level. If we don't ask for anything in fiscal '19, and we do start asking for funds to support building in fiscal year '20, let's pretend that gets funded, so that would be design...
Design first year.
Yeah, and then building for a year or two.
Correct.
So is the soonest new space could open at a high school or elementary school level school year 20... September 2022? Is that correct?
That's correct for adding on space. The space at Lafayette is a reconfiguration of a building that's already there. I don't think that would take two years.
Not take two years. So I just wanted to kind of throw that out there. We should be thinking in that kind of four-year time horizon. So I think it's good thinking to take this breather year and shift our request for additional capacity out a year to allow us to work cooperatively with our funders. But what I worry about is that it could be misleading, and it's gotten us in trouble in the past. So it could lead one to assume that we don't need space because we're not asking for it. And I think that logic has gotten us into trouble in the past. We, in an effort to be a good team player, we've adjusted to transitions in leadership, both at our organization and at both of our funders. We're about to have another transition in leadership. And so I would like this board to, in the future, and I'm not talking about this CIP, but in the future, stop... I think we should just stop doing that. I think we should ask for what we need, because it can inadvertently... Not doing so can inadvertently lead to planning that does not accommodate our needs. And that's where we are now. And so there are transitions in leadership at the board levels, executives, senior staff. So I think we need to put on paper what we need, so we're clear and transparent. And so to remedy that, I would like to convey this document, convey this request, to our elected leaders with a cover letter that explains that this is what's going on and what our needs are, where we are at capacity, and that we do need high school space and elementary space now. And so...
Can I comment on that?
Yeah.
Can I comment on that? It's my understanding, again, from talking to several members of the county board of supervisors, that they very much want that liaison committee to operate far more seriously than it has in the past, and they see that as an opportunity to deal with the various issues, funding issues that we're talking about, on an ongoing basis, rather than simply respond to a request that we have. I think that they feel that there's... They obviously are supportive, and then they're partners in this ongoing interaction concerning the funding of schools in our school system. So I don't... I'm not... I guess I'm not quite sure what you just said fits in within that context, okay?
I think it fits nicely, actually.
Fine.
Yeah, I do. Thank you, Dr. Beers. I think you're exactly right.
Madam Chair?
Yeah, sorry.
I have this for my final comments tonight, for board comments, but one of the things when I've met with members of the board of supervisors, right now, our strategic plan for building, I'm not talking about the general strategic plan, but our need for capacity has not fit in with their strategic plan. And you're saying exactly right what needs to happen. We somehow need to convey to them about our current and future needs, but it needs to be in a plan, and we need to work with them so that it becomes part of their strategic plan. And right now, it is not part of their strategic plan. And when I was on the liaison committee, I asked them about our future needs about new schools, and they said, "Well, they don't do anything until we pull the trigger." Well, I think we have to pull the trigger, and we have to somehow become part of that of the board of supervisors' strategic plan, because right now, we're not.
I'm sorry, can I... I think you're gonna see a change there, at least from the conversations I've had.
I think so, too.
They really... There are several board members that really think that's a really positive thing to do, and to do it on a regular basis. I mean, we... They have had situations where they had a superintendent who never showed up to any of those meetings. So I think this is... This is, you know, it's important to do that, and you're right. They... I do know that they have always recognized, over the next 10 or 12 years, we're gonna have to build a new elementary school, and we're gonna have to build another high school. I think what they have been trying to do is figure out how to do it in terms of the debt that they're already carrying, how to reduce that debt. So when it's time to actually build one or both of those schools, they've got some money set aside that can be used to lower the amount they actually have to borrow, so...
Yeah. I do think it's important to note, though, that whereas our needs for space may have not have gotten to the board of supervisors or to city council, we have put it in our plan. The first time elementary school space showed up was in our planned fiscal year '17. The first time high school space showed up was in our CIP request fiscal year '15. So I just wanna put it out there that it's not that it hasn't been requested, it just didn't make it... It dropped off, so... And we didn't drop it off, so...
Well, because, and I think part of that, Carol, was we had so much ongoing discussion about the building of the middle school. It put everything, everything sort of, you know, these were submitted to the board, but they were never really... They didn't engage in long-term discussion about that. They know that. They know that there's an elementary, and it's like, "So how are we gonna do this?" It's more along those lines. You know, I don't think there's opposition. That's reality. They know, given the current growth and what their expectations are, we're gonna have to build an elementary school and a high school, and then eventually, we're gonna... I'll be gone by then. We'll have to probably build another middle school, so it's what it is.
Hopefully, just this board, Dr. Beers, and not otherwise.
So to your point, Dr. Beers, in that cover... In that... So, to your point, Dr. Beers, in that cover, in that communication to the board with our CIP, I'll include an enthusiastic comment about liaison and...
Yeah, because I know that they, they want to sit down, they want to do it.
Yeah, and while, and in the, in the past, it has basically been the seven members of this board that are talking to the supervisors, in the future, it needs to be the greater community talking to the supervisors and, and making sure that they understand that there is a need for additional student space.
Do we have the email addresses to those thousands of people who filled out the survey?
Well, that was, you know, that was one of the, that was a frequent comment by a lot of people that filled out the survey, especially about the high schools.
Yeah.
So...
Okay. So, basically, we're going to adopt, as staff works with their counterparts, with our funding partners and the community to move forward with contemplating high school and elementary school space, I, I would like to just, not direct, but just maybe if there's anybody who feels strongly about anything, to just seed their thinking as they go, because we're not going to see this for 10 months, and, because you're going to go work and do your job, so, so I, I would like to give just some thoughts on either high school expansions or a fourth high school, just to, to seed that thinking, so does anyone have any thoughts that they would like to add about expansion or fourth high school to just inform staff's thinking as they embark on this, on this work?
I mean, I, I think that the, that committee has to do its work and figure out what, and let them decide what they believe is the best, as they look at the projections, I think as, as we look at what's going on in the north end of the county, that's really going to impact our long-range expansion versus high school, new high school discussion, you know, if, if the, right now, the, the enrollment projections don't show an expansion in the northern end of the county, and as much, to the extent that we saw it last year.
Okay.
And, and, and I think they actually shine, kind of show it slowing down, you know, I just, I just don't see that, I mean, I think, I think the northern end of the county, once it's six lanes from, from here to, here to Nag's Head, it's going to, it's going to really just explode, so, that's, that's just, I just, I just don't want, I don't want to, I don't want to bias the committee to say that I think we need to have expansions or I think we need to have high schools, I, I would let that, let that committee do its work.
I, I'm not interested in biasing, but I think being clear about what, what our concerns are or what, what information we would want to see, I think, is probably pretty good so they're not surprised, so I think there's a little bit, Ms. Onby.
Madam Chair, so I, I would lean more towards expanding our three high schools because I think we struggle programmatically to support three high schools now, and so I don't see how, there would just be more challenges with, with four, and I think expanding three to around 15 still doesn't preclude a fourth high school, I think at some point, we probably will build a fourth high school, but I don't, I personally don't see that until 2030, 21, 32, and we can expand to three high schools and be fairly well utilized and also build an elementary school and finish James Blair and build a central office. So, I would, I would, there are students now who can't, who can't take classes because we, there's, we can't offer them in all three schools, so I think that problem would be exacerbated if we had four.
If, as you contemplate, Dr. Heron, I, I have a comment about the expansions, if you, as you contemplate that, one of the concerns I had with the programs moving from Lafayette to Jamestown was that even though we're providing transportation for GED and Learning Lab, that may not always be true and that may not universally be true, and War Hill is always going to have public transit and Jamestown may not always have public transit. Additionally, War Hill is next to Thomas Nelson, and ideally, people who are in the Learning Lab and GED might then go to a natural next step to Thomas Nelson, and War Hill was built for expansion in its core spaces, so those are questions I will be asking about when you come back with that in, in 10 months, and then if, as you think about a fourth high school, some things that are on my radar, I'd like to understand if there's a meaningful difference between a 1,200-student school and a 1,500-student school and what, whether that positively impacts kids enough to justify the increased cost of operating a fourth school. I, I'd like to understand adjustments at the other three high schools that would still be needed in terms of core space and, and maker space. I would have to understand the impact on SOQ and whether we could, we would still be kind of at a razor-thin margin with SED and ELL, and whether we would be going to SOQ in, in all other classes in order to accommodate an increased administration, and I, just impact on programming and athletic teams currently already struggle to find space. So, those are the kinds of things, programmatically, that I would be interested in, because this is a community that has felt very strongly that all programs have to be equal at all schools, and, and I'm not, I'd like to understand the financial implications of that as you embark on that journey. Anything else?
Yeah, I would like...
I like both of those points.
Yeah, yeah.
Sorry.
I would just like to say that we have never built a school that we haven't filled up.
Yes. Yep. That is true. All right, so we have a motion, a second, and lots of discussion. Are we ready for a vote? Is there anything else? The Capitol approval...
Oh, jeez. Phew, okay.
Okay. Ms. Serser, will you call the roll, please?
Mrs. Young.
Aye.
Dr. Beers.
Aye.
Ms. Hummel.
Aye.
Mr. Kelly.
Aye.
Ms. Onby.
Aye.
Mrs. Taylor.
Aye.
Ms. Cook.
Aye. What our parliamentarian meant to say was, can you repeat the question? That's what she meant to say. Okay, item 8.04, review policy, GCBA professional staff national board certification program. Mr. Kelly, can I have a motion, please?
Absolutely, Madam Chair, I move approval of, of policy GCBA professional staff national board certification recognition.
Can I have a second, please?
Second.
All right, any discussion?
All three of them.
No discussion, because Julie will forget what the...
Really?
Julie calls the question.
All right, Ms. Serser, will you call the roll, please?
Dr. Beers.
Aye.
Ms. Hummel.
Aye.
Mr. Kelly.
Aye.
Ms. Onby.
Aye.
Mrs. Taylor.
Aye.
Mrs. Young.
Aye.
Ms. Cook.
Aye, motion passes. 8.05, review policy, GCDA conditions of employment, Ms. Hummel, may I have a motion, please?
I move that we approve the aforementioned policy.
Policy...
Since my gear is not up here.
GCDA.
The, the policy GCDA conditions of employment.
All right, can I have a second?
I'll second that.
Second that, okay. Mr. Kelly, thank you for the second, any discussion? All right, Ms. Serser, will you call the roll, please?
Ms. Onby.
Aye.
Mrs. Taylor.
Aye.
Mrs. Young.
Aye.
Dr. Beers.
Aye.
Ms. Hummel.
Aye.
Mr. Kelly.
Aye.
Ms. Cook.
Aye, motion passes. 8.06, appointment to 21st Century and Career Ready Advisory Committee, Ms. Onby, can I have a motion, please?
Yes, Madam Chair, I move that we appoint Stuart, Stuart Harris to the 21st Century Career Ready Advisory Committee for a term ending October 31, 2019.
Second.
Second.
Any discussion? Serser, will you call the roll, please?
Mrs. Taylor.
Aye.
Mrs. Young.
Aye.
Dr. Beers.
Aye.
Ms. Hummel.
Aye.
Mr. Kelly.
Aye.
Ms. Onby.
Aye.
Ms. Cook.
Aye, motion passes. 8.07, purchase of elementary school laptops, may I have a motion, please?
Madam Chair, I make a motion that we approve the purchase of laptops for elementary teachers from Lenovo in the amount of $359,500.
Thank you, Dr. Beers, can I have a second?
Second.
Thank you, Mrs. Young. Any discussion?
Trying to think of what discussion I'm going to get at home, it's good.
Ms. Serser, will you call the roll, please?
Mrs. Young.
Aye.
Dr. Beers.
Aye.
Ms. Hummel.
Aye.
Mr. Kelly.
Aye.
Ms. Onby.
Aye.
Mrs. Taylor.
Aye.
Ms. Cook.
Passes. 9.01, board members' comments, Ms. Onby, please.
Hope everyone was able to attend the holiday parade, and I'm so thankful that Ms. Hummel took the great picture of the mascots, it's now my screensaver, you can't see it, it's my screensaver on my school board laptop, so the mascots were phenomenal, I can't wait to see the spider next year. Spider.
Fuzzy.
Fuzzy spider.
Oh.
And then, want to thank all of our students, our band students and orchestra students
and choral students who are now doing their holiday concerts, I've had an opportunity to attend several of those and they work really hard to perform and, and share that with the community, and did have an opportunity to attend Jamestown's Christmas Carol, and that was just phenomenal.
Mr. ... Away, I'm not done. I want to thank the community for all of their robust feedback, did help inform our thinking, and wish everyone a happy holiday.
I'm done now.
Thank you, Mr. Kelly.
Yeah, well, no, in addition to Mrs. Hummel's participation in the parade, I want to thank our bands for providing outstanding music, War Hill leading Santa Claus down the, down the road, I thought that they represent our school system well, you know, over the past few months, we have, we have had some, some tough decisions, tough discussions, very emotional, but I think as, as a community and as a board, we have done a very good job of coming through that and still keeping, still keeping the, the interest of kids in mind, and so I just want to appreciate the work of the fellow board members and the community as they participated in this discussion, and hope they will stay on board as we go for, go forward with consideration of expansions at the high school and the elementary school level.
Mrs. Young.
Well, first of all, I want to thank Jamestown High School for the exceptional Christmas Carol program, which I had the opportunity of attending, and I sat next to a family that had been through it twice because they loved it so much, so I really truly enjoyed it, and I, I loved the way they did the sets, I thought they were, that was remarkable, a clever way of doing them, so I want to congratulate them, and I guess the only other comment, I'll say ditto to both of my other esteemed board members, but I just want to wish happy holidays to all of our faculty and staff, and I want them to enjoy their families and get lots of rest.
Dr. Beers.
I also would like to thank all the members of the community who have emailed, called, completed surveys in regard to their thoughts and concerns about redistricting, I think we've, we heard from a sizable number of people, and I found it enlightening and, and educating in, in terms of thinking about redistricting. I also want to congratulate the Lafayette football team, they didn't quite get all the way, but also let them know that an occasional disappointment and loss can make you stronger and better in the future, so take heart, and, and also, the other thing I would hope is that all the students out there can keep it together until, what, the middle of next Wednesday, I know it's tough and you and your teachers are going to get a well-deserved holiday break, and I too wish everybody a wonderful, safe holiday and a prosperous and a well-deserved new year.
Thank you, Dr. Beers. Ms. Hummel.
It's great to be in a parade, let me just say, it was a ton of fun. I got the honor of escorting the War Hill lion because the War Hill lion couldn't see where he was going because he could only see out of his teeth, and it was amazing, he was awesome, he, his name, I think, was Philip, from, a football player from War Hill who just volunteered, and he was high-fiving and strutting down like, like the king of the jungle that he was, so he was wonderful, it was fun, and also, I don't think anyone truly appreciates the sacrifice that those mascots do every single time they put on those costumes, that sometimes they have to spray the inside, they have to wear masks, it's, it is, it's a very, very dedicated person who becomes a mascot, so, it really is. Anyway, happy holidays to everyone else, and thanks, I did actually read all of these comments, so I really appreciate all the people in the community who are no longer listening to, to our meeting tonight because they've turned it off, but happy holidays anyway.
They're never going to listen again.
Yeah, they're not listening to us.
Thank you. Mrs. Taylor.
It's always difficult to follow Ms. Hummel because she's so enthusiastic every time, and just so full of life at almost 10 o'clock at night, but, again, thank you to everyone in the community for their feedback and fellow board members for working through this redistricting. No, it hasn't been an easy process, it is still ongoing, but, and that's about it, we'll make it short and sweet, and everyone have a great winter break, I know we all could use a break.
Thank you. I just wanted to say that I believe the mascots also made an appearance at the sleigh bell race, which I did not attend because I did not want to run in sleet, so, anyway, that, thank you, and I was curious, Dr. Heron, I know you did a kind of analysis of pay for non-instructional staff recently, were substitute drivers and those salaries part of that study? Do you know, you don't have to answer that now, but it's something that I'd like to understand, so, yeah, so, if you can, anyway, and I would just thank all of you for your work over the last several months on, we're not done with redistricting, we still have middle school to do, but, but particularly high school was very, at times contentious and sometimes not even, sometimes a little less respectful than maybe some of us would have wished on the part of some people, so I appreciate everyone's composure, your dedication, your collegial attitude, and your hard work, I, I'm very, very proud of this board and think that we followed a process that was transparent and, and fair, and, and so I want to thank you all very much for that. So, with that, upcoming meetings, we have a closed session on, in the new year, January 2nd at 6:00 PM in Room 309 at the Annex here, and then followed by an organizational meeting and work session and action items also on the 2nd of January here in Room 300 in the Annex. Budget retreat Saturday, January 6th at 8:00 AM in, right here in Room 300 in the Annex, and then a closed session on the 16th of January, 6:00 PM in Building F, remember, we're moving to Building F, we rotate every other year, so we're at James City County starting on the 16th of January, then there will be a public hearing on the operating budget, and then followed by a regular meeting immediately following the public hearing, so, those are our upcoming meetings. The next item is setting the agenda for the next regular meeting, our next meeting is not a regular meeting, so I will not be setting the agenda, we're just going to an organizational meeting, a work session and action items, so with that, where's my thing? The meeting adjourns.